Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York City Council meeting on transportation. At this time, please place your electronic devices on vibrate or in silent mode. And throughout the meeting, please do not approach the dais. If you have a question, please approach one of the sergeant-at-arms. Thank you Chair, you may begin.
Good afternoon and thank you for joining today's hearing of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure. Today's hearing is about truck, city truck routes, a topic that affects all New Yorkers who rely on the city's expansive truck routes to provide our residents with food and important goods. The trucking industry is also a driving force in our city's economy, providing good-paying jobs throughout the five boroughs, including in my own district in Southeast Queens. During the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, truck drivers and delivery workers were essential employees, who worked tirelessly to provide New Yorkers with our essential food, household items, and medicine. Before I begin, I would like to take a moment to thank all these workers for their indispensable hard work and dedication to helping all New Yorkers when they needed it most. Today, I would like the committee to bring ongoing conversations within the trucking industry to the forefront, so that we can provide how the city shares its roads and trucks. While not a reflection on the individual truck drivers and delivery workers I mentioned, trucking in the city can produce negative consequences in our communities such as traffic, noise, and pollution. Often, these problems disproportionately affect low-income and communities of color, where high rates of respiratory illnesses like asthma are common due to the emission of truck exhaust in the air. This inequity is adversely affecting New Yorkers, including children, throughout the city and sheds light on the need for mitigation efforts in coordination with the communities most affected. It is also affecting the drivers themselves, who are forced to endure difficult and possibly unhealthy working conditions. Each year, approximately 365 million tons of cargo enter, leave, or pass through the city. Nearly 90% of that cargo is being carried by trucks. By 2045, the same proportion of cargo is expected to be delivered by trucks, but the tonnage carried is expected to increase by 68%. Prior to the pandemic, in 2019, 1.8 million packages were delivered to New Yorkers on a typical day. This number skyrocketed to 3.7 million packages after the pandemic started, and it is likely to increase due to consumer changes and e-commerce shopping. Predictably, this high volume of deliveries causes considerable congestion on city streets. Lack of space for these vehicles can create a situation where drivers have little choice but to block car traffic, bus lanes, and bike lanes. This creates a dangerous situation for pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers, which can ultimately undermine the city's expansive investment into Vision Zero and the Department of Transportation's traffic mitigation efforts. It also creates traffic delays for New Yorkers during peak traffic hours, particularly residents in transportation deserts, such as my own district, who have often have no choice but to drive to work. And yet, the city's truck route has remained largely unchanged since the 1970s. The increase in deliveries has also exacerbated the problem of overnight truck parking in residential neighborhoods. While it is illegal to park a commercial vehicle overnight on residential streets in the city, residents in many neighborhoods, including those near major freight hubs, such as JFK in my own district, report that trucks are regularly flouting that prohibi- excuse me, that prohibition. This problem is in part due to federal regulations, which requires drivers to take mandatory tests, at which point they must pull off the road in search of parking. Since the city has an insufficient number of designated lots in which they can park, truckers have, often have no choice but to park on residential streets, causing congestion on streets and noise pollution from idling vehicles. It is my sincere desire to have a healthier and more equitable city, one that provides a higher quality of life for all New Yorkers. As such, it is my hope today that the committee explores comprehensive solutions to these trucking problems that the city faces. It is important to create space to see how this council can use its legislative muscle to drive this conversation along. The difficulties we explore today are not new, and it will take time to solve. However, our hearing will allow stakeholders to discuss these issues while allowing the committee, the committee to hear several new bills. Today, we will hear from the Department of Transportation, who will testify before the Committee on Truck Routes within the city. The committee hopes to hear what this administration is doing to address the issues I outlined, as well as updating us on the city's off-hour delivery program and the new, and the neighborhood loading zone program. We would also like an update on how the Department of Transportation is working to improve truck deliveries in the city, including what it may have learned from former Mayor Bill de Blasio's congestion action plan. We also understand that we're joined by members of NYPD, and we will have some questions in terms of enforcement and resources as well. Finally, I would also like the administration to address the work of the Southeast Queens Community Task Force, led by Southeast Queens community leaders, Bill Perkins, Barbara Brown, Gloria Boyce Charles, and too many to name quite honestly, because it's really a collective effort across Southeast Queens and the greater borough, to address environmental concerns in Southeast Queens. In addition to the oversight portion of today's hearing, we are hearing several bills and a resolution that seek to improve the city's truck route infrastructure. Intro number 708, sponsored by Councilmember Aviles, would require the Department of Transportation to redesign the city's truck route network to improve safety, increase visibility, reduce traffic congestion and emissions, and reduce vehicle miles traveled. DOT is, in redesigning the network, would be required to consult with the city agencies' affected residents and representatives from business and environmental and climate justice organizations, street safety organizations, industrial business zone administrators, and the trucking logistics and last mile delivery industries. Intro number 708 would also require that the Department of Transportation implement daylighting at each intersection adjacent to the truck route network, and review and replace truck route signage where necessary. Intro number 906, sponsored by Councilmember Brandon, would require an agency or office designated by the mayor to, by December 31st, 2023, identify one location in each borough where it would be feasible and appropriate to create designated off-street parking for tractor trailers. Intro number 906 would require the designated agency or office to create such parking by December 31st, 2025. Intro number 924, sponsored by Councilmember Aviles, would require the Department of Transportation to report on the utility and feasibility of using street design as a means to limit or reduce the, the use of streets in resident districts by commercial vehicles by December 31st, 2023. Resolution number 460, sponsored by Councilmember Farias, a resolution calling on New York State Legislature and Governor to fully fund the MTA in the state's upcoming fiscal year 2024 budget, in an effort to ensure that public transit riders have effective, affordable public transportation. The MTA maintains fiscal stability in the face of a looming fiscal cliff, and the MTA operate more frequent buses and train service statewide. We will now hear from several of the sponsors regarding their bills, beginning with Councilmember Aviles on intro 708 and intro number 924.
Good afternoon. Thank you Chair Brooks Powers for this hearing today on intro 708 and intro 925, and thank you for your support on these important pieces of legislation. I also want to thank all of the last mile and environmental justice advocates in the room today and online, who have been work, who have worked tirelessly on this issue, and whom I am sure we will be hearing from during public testimony today. I represent Council District 38 in Brooklyn, which encompasses a waterfront industrial business zone. Since the pandemic, our neighborhoods have experienced a rapid proliferation of last-mile logistics facilities flooding our streets with massive uptick in trucks, traffic, air pollution, in what is already an environmental justice community. In attempting to tackle this issue with our city agencies, I have been told by many agencies that the problems posed by last-mile logistics are too large and complex. I reject that notion that our communities must continue to suffer the ills of an antiquated and racist land use policy, simply because we are unwilling to untangle the bureaucracy that we have created. While fixing the underlying systemic issues requires a hard look at our citywide land use policies, our communities cannot wait. There are short-term measures we can undertake now that will at least help mitigate further damage to our communities and our health, and we are here today to discuss some of those solutions. Intro 708 requires that the Department of Transportation redesign the existing truck route to improve safety and reduce both traffic congestion and emissions. It requires that the DOT undertake this work under advisement from impacted residents, environmental justice advocates, street safety advocates, as well as those knowledgeable of the trucking industry. In addition to this measure, we must also look at how the existing network contributes to unintended consequences, including oversized trucks illegally using our residential roadways, threatening our infrastructure and our safety. It is not enough to say that improper roadway, roadway use is a state enforcement issue. The city must ask itself, what is within our power to, within our power to protect our residents? It is no surprise to me that the residents of Red Hook have come up with solutions before our city agencies, and that they are the inspiration of intro 924. This bill calls on DOT to report on the feasibility of using street design as a means to limit or reduce the use of residential streets by commercial vehicles. I look forward to hearing from the agency today on real city-level solutions that can be implemented and that will help protect our communities. In closing, I would like to say that the days of simply accepting the same old model of extraction is over. Last-mile freight significantly contribut- contributes to congestion, not only in the neighborhoods I represent, but citywide. Since the pandemic, the rise of e-commerce has required an additional 7,800 freight vehicles to be on the road each day in our city streets. At eight hours a day, this means that we are adding 60,000 vehicle hours each day to our collective roads, our lungs, and Amazon is reaping all of the profits as we suffer. We cannot be a green city without looking at this problem. It's all just talk if we allow large corporations to continue to exploit our land with no thought given to the impact on our residents. Our communities can no longer bear the brunt of the entire weight of rampant consumerism. We cannot be a city that stands for justice and equity if we don't take action now. It is time to update the policy, the framework, and I want to thank you all for hearing these important pieces of legislation and discussing them. Thank you Chair.
Thank you so much. We will next hear from Councilmember Amanda Farias.
Thank you Chair Brooks Powers for hosting today's important hearing. Currently, New Yorkers are waiting anxiously to see what the fate of our city will be in this years, for this year, as we watch for the state's budget to be finalized. Our neighbors and advocates across the state, with the leadership of Senator Andrew Gornardis and Assemblymember Zoran Mamdani, have been calling on the governor to fully fund the MTA and prioritize our working-class New Yorkers who run the city. The city council is full of dedicated transit advocates, many who are sitting with me here today. With this resolution, we are sending a strong message to Governor Hokel that New Yorkers are in critical need for more reliable public transportation, and we have to do everything we can to make that a reality. That is why I'm proud to be a prime sponsor of Resolution 460, and I thank all my colleagues who have signed on thus far. I look forward to discussing the importance of it more in today's hearing. I also like to say that much of our city's traffic infrastructure was built for the reliance of cars and trucks to bring our communities together, and I'm excited about hearing intro 708 and 924 today. With, with the current infrastructure that we have that's narrow-sighted, has made my community, along with many other citywide, severely impacted by health implications from congestion, car and truck idling, and by more trucks on our local streets. Residents are not only seeing high asthma rates, but see their commutes prolonged with trucks obstructing roadways, blocking visibility to crosswalks for pedestrians, and taking much-needed parking spots as they continue to park on residential streets overnight. We have to redesign the city's outdated truck route infrastructure to improve safety, quality of life, and reduce emissions throughout the city. We cannot continue to be reactive when our trucks get stuck under train platforms and park illegally in our neighborhoods. We need a proactive plan from the administration and the DOT. That is why my colleagues and I are working to pass intro 708 and 924 to redesign the truck route network and officially put an end to decades of environmental and community injustices actively committed against our Black, Latino, and AAPI neighborhoods in our outer boroughs. Thank you for allowing me time.
Thank you so much for that, and I know some folks may be wondering why the MTA reso, but it is timely right now as Albany continues to work to pass its budget, and so thank you so much, Councilmember Farias, for pushing this important piece of legislation forward. Today, we are joined by Councilmembers Lewis, Farias, Lee, Narcisse, Wrestler, Williams, Juan, Carr, Ariola, Kagan, and Aviles. We now turn over to testimony. I look forward to hearing from the city administration, advocates, and members of the public regarding, regarding the oversight and legislation at this hearing. I want to thank my staff and committee staff as well for their hard work. Samuel Breidbart, Council to the Committee, Kevin Kotowski, Senior Policy Analyst, John Basile, Senior Policy Analyst, Jorge Muniz Reyes Communications, Jack Segenthaler, my Policy and Budget Director, and Renee Taylor, my Chief of Staff. I will now ask the committee council to go over some procedural items and swear in the representatives for DOT.
Thank you Chair. I'm Sam Breidbart, Council to the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee of the New York City Council. Our first witnesses will be from the Department of Transportation, Eric Beaton, Deputy Commissioner for Transportation Planning and Management, Charles Hukebu, Assistant Commissioner for Regional and Strategic Planning, Denise Mendez, Director of the Office of Freight Mobility, and Rick Rodriguez, Assistant Commissioner for Intergovernmental and Community Affairs. And we're also joined by, from the NYPD, Deputy Inspector Eric Warobi and Director Michael Clark. I will now administer the oath. Please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Thank you, you may begin when ready.
Good afternoon, Chair Brooks Powers, and members of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure. I am Eric Beaton, Deputy Commissioner for Transportation Planning and Management at DOT. With me today are Charles Hukebu, Assistant Commissioner for Regional and Strategic Planning, Denise Mendez, Director of the Office of Freight Mobility, and Rick Rodriguez, Assistant Commissioner for Intergovernmental and Community Affairs. We are also joined by Deputy Inspector Eric Warobi and Director Michael Clark from the New York City Police Department. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of Mayor Adams and Commissioner Rodriguez on the administration's freight vision and the city's truck route network. In recent decades, New York City has experienced record growth in terms of population, jobs, and commerce. Our complex freight network, with trucks delivering 90% of our goods, has played a critical role in this growth. The growth of e-commerce, which was accelerated by the COVID-19 pandemic, has dramatically increased freight volumes, not only between businesses, but to our residences as well. More than 80% of New Yorkers receive at least one package at home each week, and 18% receive packages on four or more days per week, leading to an increase in delivery vehicles on city streets. Between January 2020 and December 2021, we estimated that freight traffic across the Hudson River increased by over 50%, and we expect that the amount of freight, that the amount of freight will continue increasing. Earlier estimates projected regional freight movement growth of 68% between 2012 and 2045. To respond and prepare for this growth, DOT is undertaking a number of initiatives with our partners in and out of government to transform the way freight moves throughout the city. This includes developing Delivering New York, a smart truck management plan for New York City, which lays out the city's freight vision. We have also identified opportunities and strategies to build on EDC's Freight NYC Plan with our report Delivering Green, a vision for a sustainable freight network serving New York City, and coordinate with New York State's Freight Transportation Plan. These initiatives focus on managing demand, enhancing safety, network connectivity, curb access, and promoting sustainable last-mile delivery. To manage demand, the city supports off-hour deliveries through DOT's Off-Hour Deliveries Program. Launched in 2019, the program encourages goods delivery during the off-peak hours of 7:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. in busy parts of the city. Off-hour deliveries reduce congestion, improve bus speeds, and decrease the opportunity for conflicts with pedestrians and cyclists. With participation at over 1,100 business locations citywide, DOT continues to explore new ways to expand the program. DOT also aims to manage demand and reduce truck congestion through piloting the adoption of microhubs, or spaces on or off-street where goods are loaded from larger freight vehicles to smaller, low- or no-emission vehicles, or human-powered modes such as cargo bikes or hand carts for final delivery. In compliance with Local Law 166 of 2021, DOT issued a request for expressions of interest to seek feedback on challenges and opportunities for pursuing microhubs. DOT will establish a pilot program to support the creation, operation, and expansion of microhubs this summer, as detailed in our report released last week. DOT also works to enhance safety, network connectivity, and curb access for trucks. The agency does this through truck route management, redesigning streets to reduce conflicts, expanding loading zones, and engaging on truck safety education, outreach, and partnerships. I want to take a moment to explain what a truck route is, since we understand that it can be a concerning designation. Our truck route rules are meant to keep truck drivers on truck routes until they are as close as possible to their final destination. In areas where we do not have truck routes, truck drivers can still travel to get to their final destinations, but may do so on any street that provides a direct connection, without regard to the size or land use on that street, and will do so as they serve homes and businesses all over the city. A truck route is really a restriction to minimize the negative effects of truck traffic by limiting what roads trucks can use to get close to the stores, restaurants, and homes that need them. The city's truck route network, established in the 1970s and with small updates in 2015 and 2018, has not been substantially updated to reflect changes in residential and commercial land use patterns, the transportation network, and delivery patterns from e-commerce. The administration supports changes to update the truck route network to make sure that communities are appropriately protected from truck traffic, and removing designations where inappropriate or redundant. DOT also redesigned streets to reduce conflicts between trucks and other modes, increase predictability of movements, and improve visibility of vulnerable road users. For example, our redesign of 34th Avenue in Queens both physically restricts the ability of trucks to make through trips, and adds loading zones on cross streets to provide delivery alternatives. In another example, DOT completed a major redesign of the 20th Street local truck route in Brooklyn by creating a new protected bike lane connection, increasing pedestrian space, and calming traffic, along with a one-way conversion. This redesign creates a safer, more reliable connection for cyclists, pedestrians, and truck drivers alike. We also work directly with the trucking industry by education and outreach to help keep our streets safe. Last year, DOT launched a recurring Truck Smart campaign to encourage and promote the safe operation of trucks on New York City streets, leveraging social media channels, billboards, PSA videos, radio communications, reaching over 1.5 million impressions. The agency continues to expand the number of designated parking space for loading to reduce double parking and to keep bike and bus lanes clear. Last week, DOT released the loading zone report required by Local Law 168 of 2021. DOT has developed the required methodology based on population density, land use, and the number of existing loading zones that we use to determine where loading zones are necessary to enhance safety and reduce traffic congestion. Since the beginning of 2022, DOT installed over 2,000 loading zones citywide. Going forward, we will continue to install loading zones, prioritizing zones on transit corridors, bike corridors, in street improvement projects and other safety redesigns, and corridors with high volumes of double parking violations and crashes involving double-parked trucks, as well as in response to requests from communities, businesses, and elected officials. DOT also works to promote sustainable last-mile delivery through a number of programs. With the Commercial Cargo Bike Program, DOT incentivizes adoption of sustainable and efficient freight delivery by making designated loading and unloading space available for cargo bikes on-street. The program has grown to seven participating companies and over 400 cargo bikes. Cargo bikes can load and unload wherever commercial vehicles can, and are exempt from parking meter payment. DOT is also pursuing rule and legislative changes to make the program permanent and remove legal barriers to expand the use of cargo bikes, including supporting S-1975 A-3874, sponsored by Senator Ramos and Assemblymember Jackson, which would increase the legal widths of cargo bikes to allow more efficient, ergonomic, and readily-available designs. DOT and EDC have jointly launched the Blue Highways Program to evaluate marine-free highway development and encourage the use of New York City's waterways to move goods into and around the city. The city will be releasing an RFEI later this year to better understand industry challenges and opportunities, including ways to implement and support businesses engaging in marine-free operations and supporting infrastructure. Trucks will continue to be a part of the delivery mix in New York City, and so we are committed to making sure that trucks on our streets are as safe and sustainable as possible. One example of our work here is the New York City Clean Truck Program, through which DOT offers rebate incentives to truck owners to replace or retrofit their diesel trucks with alternative fuel or zero-emissions trucks. The program is focused on trucks in industrial business zones located near environmental justice communities that have historically been subject to a disproportionate amount of diesel exhaust emissions. Another example is our work with EDC to develop a citywide freight decarbonization and truck electrification strategy, including developing design plans to install a network of up to 100 publicly accessible truck charger stations. The city has also long been a leader in requiring sideguards and other safety technology, and will continue to work with our state and federal partners to make additional safety technology mandatory. Now, turning to the bills before the committee today. First, intro 708, sponsored by Councilmember Aviles, which will require a truck route redesign. As I discussed earlier, the administration supports making revisions to our truck routes and supports the portion of the bill that will require a truck route redesign. To respond to several other elements of the bill, the bill would mandate initial and final reports on proposed changes with public comment requirements. Our current process for making changes to the Our current process for making changes to the truck route network, however, already has its own hearing and public comment process as required by the City Administrative Procedures Act, known as Kappa. While we value public input, we should ensure that the legislation creates a process that comports with Kappa. The bill would also require DOT to implement daylighting at each intersection adjacent to the truck route network. We have found daylighting valuable in some places, but not in others, and it is critical that DOT retain the discretion to determine where to use it. Next, on Intro 906, sponsored by Councilmember Brannan, which would require an agency or office designated by the mayor to identify one location in each borough where it would be feasible and appropriate to create designated off-street parking for tractor-trailers and establish such parking by the end of 2025. After hearing from elected officials and the community about overnight truck parking concerns, the city kicked off a multi-agency overnight trucking task force. This task force consists of multiple mayor's offices, NYPD, DSNY, DOT, EDC, DCAST, City Planning, and the Sheriff's Office. The goal of the task force is to come up with long-term sustainable solutions to this issue, as enforcement is only part of the solution. The task force is using data analysis and mapping to identify the areas with the highest incidents and potential sites for truck parking. The group also conducted a community survey to better understand the problem. Thanks in part to our partners in the council, who helped promote the survey, we received over 2,000 individual responses. The administration plans to announce more detailed recommendations this spring. We agree that off-street parking is an important part of solving this problem, and we look forward to discussing the bill further with the council. Next, Intro 924, sponsored by Councilmember Aviles. This bill would require DOT to study street design as a means to limiting or reducing the use of streets in residential neighborhoods by commercial vehicles. As described earlier, DOT has a robust toolbox that encourages safe operation of vehicles, including trucks. Part of the challenge is that on many streets, trucks are delivering packages, picking up waste, delivering oil, and otherwise supporting neighborhood, residential neighborhoods. While we agree with the intent of this bill, we are concerned that the additional effort in report writing would be better spent focusing on solutions in specific locations. In conclusion, I would like to thank the council for the opportunity to testify today. We look forward to working together to create a safer, more sustainable, and efficient freight system that grows the economy, supports freight-related jobs, and delivers the goods that residents and businesses need. We now welcome your questions.
Thank you for that. Once again, I'm going to request that the administration provide testimony in advance of our hearings. It's very difficult for us to prepare to have a thoughtful conversation when we're getting the testimony as we're sitting down in our seats to listen and digest this information. I've made this request before, and I hope that it is heard. Thank you. So let's start with general truck and freight trends. Each year, about 365 million tons of cargo enter, leave, pass through New York City, with eighty-nine percent of it being carried by truck. In 2045, the same proportion of cargo is expected to be delivered by truck, but the tonnage is expected to increase by sixty-eight percent to 540 million tons. How does the Department of Transportation monitor truck and freight trends in New York City? And are the projections discussed above accurate as of 2023?
Sure. And I'm going to ask my colleague Denise Mendez to speak to it a little bit, too. But we know that the current situation is already problematic, and we know that growth will only make it worse. And so we are putting a lot of effort into making sure that we're monitoring what is happening on our streets today. You know, through, we use, we collect data from a lot of different sources, we do public surveys, we monitor what's happening on our streets, and we know that we do need to make changes to make sure that the future is not just filled with trucks. But I'd like to turn it over to Denise to talk about all the different ways we collect that data and use it.
Thank you, Eric, and thank you, Chair, for the question. So the stats that you pointed out are accurate, and we continue to monitor and collect data moving forward to make sure that we're keeping abreast of the changes. As you can understand, this is a very dynamic situation, particularly after the COVID-19 pandemic, where we saw just a more dramatic shift to residential areas in terms of increased deliveries. We typically look at truck volume crossings on our major bridges and highways as additional pulse, and we also look at anonymized GPS data to look at origin, destination trends to see where the major hubs and particular attracting areas that are generating a lot of freight activity. Our most recent reports show that about 120,000 trucks cross New York City boundaries on a daily basis, and that particularly fluctuates throughout the year, but that's the general average of truck trips. And then, more generally, the average truck trips throughout a, in a traffic stream can average between eight to twelve percent of the traffic stream.
Thank you for that. And when you say that you know changes are needed to be made, what has DOT done to date to be able to bring about these changes?
Sure. And, you know, I think we really just put a lot of effort into building our freight program over the years. One that I'll highlight really is our Off-Hour Deliveries program that a few years ago didn't exist at all and has since signed up over 1,100 businesses that have agreed to move their deliveries from daytime to nighttime in the busiest parts of the city. We also really put a lot of effort into installing loading zones, and I think our focus on loading zones has really changed in recent years, too. Loading zones used to be something that was really limited to our commercial and industrial parts of the city, which used to receive the vast majority of deliveries. Over the recent years, and particularly accelerated by the pandemic, we've seen a much larger increase in residential deliveries, where now the majority of deliveries are made on our residential blocks. And that has resulted in double parking and other, and blocked bus stops and fire hydrants and other things that we don't want to see. So with the development of our neighborhood loading zone program, we've started to install those on residential blocks as well to make sure that those deliveries can happen in ways that are not impacting the community in bad ways. So we have a very large and diverse program, lots of pieces of which we've talked about here, but happy to go into more detail into any that you would like more on.
Thank you. Just staying in line with the truck and freight trends, how many packages are expected to enter New York City daily this year, up or down from the 3.6 million per day in March twenty, per day in March 22? Like, is it going to be more or less than that you feel the packages are expected to enter into New York City?
Well, the trend in recent years has only been one direction, which is up and up. You know, that there's obviously some, some limit to that, but we haven't hit it yet. And we do think that those packaged deliveries are part of what's making New York City a livable place right now, that in a lot of communities, it may be the best way to get goods and part of what makes living in parts of the city more affordable. But we know that it comes with a balance and that, you know, more and more deliveries, even if it works for an individual, don't always work for a community. And that's part of what our job is, is to make sure that New Yorkers are getting what they want and what they need, but that it's happening in a way that isn't overly burdening any part of the city.
And how has DOT factored in these projections and implemented policies regarding trucking in New York City?
Right. So, I mean, this is what we're here to do, is to make sure that we are taking that into account and making changes. You know, we can't control whether a truck is going to enter the city. You know, there's a large interstate commerce system, and if a truck wants to come in, we can't stop it at the border. But we can provide the right rules and incentives to make sure that the trucks that do come in are doing it in the most safe and sustainable way possible. So we want fewer truck miles on our streets. One of the goals of our microhub program is that trucks are not driving around and around neighborhoods, going 20 feet and going around the corner and going another 20 feet to make deliveries. We want the truck to arrive and stop, and then make that final delivery by foot, by bike, by some more sustainable mode, and therefore reduce the amount of total miles on our streets. We want to provide these incentives to make truckers do the right thing.
I'd also add that, as you've heard in testimony today, there's no one-size-fits-all. We really have to tackle this problem across all elements and really thinking about a holistic approach with the different strategies. So you've heard Eric also highlight the goods movement by water, really trying to reduce that demand on our infrastructure while also better managing the trucks that do remain on our streets.
Thank you. I want to talk about truck routes next. How many miles of roads long is the New York City Truck Route Network?
So we currently have about 1,300 miles of truck routes in New York City.
And when was the last time the New York City Truck Route map was updated?
So the map was last updated in 2022, but latest rules in terms of the Truck Route Network was updated in 2018.
What were the main updates?
In 2022 or 2018?
The one that had the significant amount of updates to it?
2018, the rules were to provide expanded access for sealed ocean container terminal, container, containers to come in from, from New Jersey through Staten Island to the Global Container Terminal. So that was a very minor change.
Yeah. And just to be clear, in our view, the Truck Route Network has not had a major change since it was created in the 1970s. There have been a number of minor edits over the years to accommodate very specific issues, but the network as it exists in our rules is very, very similar to how it was first created.
That's where I was going to go with this. I'm glad you clarified that, because I know by all accounts from DOT publicly, it has been that it's been since the 1970s. But when you talk about 2018, the expanded access, what does that mean exactly?
So particularly, there were some challenges and really on the, sort of, the operational burden for freight coming into, from New Jersey to the Global Container Terminal in Staten Island that really put New York City at a competitive disadvantage for bringing in goods into the region. So we worked across lines with the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey as well to advance these rules that allowed the sealed ocean container terminals to come across the Gothles through, to go to the Global Container Terminal without the need of a permit. So the footprint of the rules that were advanced did not add any additional miles to the Truck Route Network, but it designated a particular route that the sealed ocean container terminals can access from the Gothles Bridge to the Global Container Terminal. And these are larger vehicles, over 80,000 pounds, et cetera.
And when that edit was made, was there any consultation with the impacted communities?
We held our CAPA hearing. We worked very closely with the Staten Island community.
You said the capital hearing, you said?
I'm sorry, the CAPA process, the Citywide Administrative Procedures Act, which is typically what we need to use for advancing rulemaking, which requires a public hearing.
Sorry, if you could talk louder into the mic, because I was having a hard time hearing you, so that's why I was asking. But I think it's the construction, possibly. But I heard you just now. And when you said it was the capital hearing?
CAPA.
CAPA, okay.
Yeah, C-A-P-A, sorry.
Okay. And was that held within the communities that were affected? Where was that meeting held?
So the hearing itself was held in downtown Manhattan, but we did do outreach in the area. That particular rule change happens to be in a very specific industrial area immediately adjacent to the Gothles Bridge, so there isn't, there isn't like a residential community that's directly affected. But we did work with the local stakeholders in developing the specific route.
And then, just, didn't I hear you when you spoke about in 2022, what some of those changes were?
Yeah. So that was specifically an update to the map itself that we published and put in our website. And the map included additional information about new rules. At the back of the map, which is mainly our critical publication that we give to truck drivers, and we also work with PD to hand that out to truck drivers when they're doing enforcement. We also included information about low-clarence structures. I remember the councilmember Farias mentioned hitting MTA structures and things like that. So we included more information for truck drivers to make more informed decisions about which routes they choose.
And what types of issues are, and I'm going to come back in terms of the information that the truck drivers get, but just staying in line with this right now, what type of issues are considered when making changes to the New York City Truck Route map? How are, like, safety, equity, and health concerns considered?
Yeah. And it's a good question, and it's, it's one, I can talk about how we will think about it, but like, the honest answer is we haven't done a lot of work on this in the past, and it's something that we agree we should be doing. But we use a lot of the data that Denise talked about, including, you know, the, looking at origins and destinations, about where trucks are really trying to get to, and then trying to look at which are the streets that are least impactful on neighborhoods in helping the trucks get there. So, you know, if there is a port facility or an industrial business zone, we know that trucks are going to be traveling there, but we want to make sure that they're on streets that are really appropriate for trucks. You know, wherever possible, through other industrial or commercial neighborhoods, wherever possible, on wider streets, not narrow streets, you know, and trying to find, you know, not that any street wants more trucks, but trying to find the places that are least impactful. So we will want to do that and want to do it in, while also making sure that we have a cohesive network, right? It doesn't make any sense if the truck route is on Street One in this area and then Street Four in this area where the trucks happen to travel in between. The network does need to connect to itself in reasonable ways, and we just, we want to find the best streets on which to do that.
And would you be willing to work with myself and my colleagues to make sure that this is happening?
Sure, absolutely. We think that local input with, you know, from yourselves, from other community members, is going to be very important to make sure that people both understand what we're doing and why, but also so that we get appropriate feedback on, on issues and concerns that they have.
And with the, the changes in those two years that you mentioned, or just in general since 1970, has the map changed to reflect the increase in e-commerce and the increased need for trucks to move along routes previously only designed for smaller vehicles? And if so, how?
Yeah. So the answer is, the map has not changed very much. You know, as Denise said, we've made specific changes in response to specific issues like the Global Container Terminal, but the map is very similar, and we think taking a fresh look in light of, of changing delivery patterns makes sense.
What triggered those changes? So you said that it was specific to the need or recognizing the need, but what actually triggers that action from DOT currently?
Yeah. So they're initiated, you know, by us, but the request comes from different places. I don't know if you want to talk about Global Container Terminal or Charles, maybe?
Yeah. Let me speak to some of the factors. We have to recognize that the industry itself is changing. In the 50s, you had the advent of the containers that came in as a new means of moving goods in a secure way and a safe way. Well, one of the challenges we had here is that as we got into the 70s, 80s, and even as recently as 2015, we had to reconfigure access to, most of you know, about 53-foot trailers. So it's not that the roads had to be what, we had to redesign, knowing that the destination here, the destination here, JFK area, is a very important destination, and you have to move goods to Long Island. So we had to redesign and you work through the federal process that's so as to permit interstate commerce, to ensure that cross, access from Long Island Expressway into JFK Airport, going across all the way north to Wyestone Bridge, Throcksnag Bridge, going to George Washington Bridge, so that containers can come in into our area. That's one industry trend. The other industry trend we're seeing really has to do with even The other industry trend we're seeing really has to do with even the nature of the vehicles themselves. We're trying to ensure that Denise already spoke about the Global Container Terminal. This really is sealed ocean containers that make our whole metropolitan area, our port area, more competitive and save jobs in the Staten Island community and in fact, all over the city. So we had to accommodate that so as to remain competitive. There are other industry changes that are happening that relate to even the nature of the break of bulk function that happens with these truckers. For example, they load pods into these, whether it's containers and sometimes into trucks, and they want to move these as units, as secure units. Most of us have seen packages that come to our neighborhood, and you have these little containers that they are basically pre-sorted and they are being moved to particular, well, in this case, we talk about zip codes for the US Postal Service. In some cases, it's actually sorted on the basis of neighborhoods at a block-by-block level. So now we have our buildings with our high-density, multiple units in a particular area. That means they have to service different apartments, different, in some cases, you have businesses at the bottom. I say all this to say, there is the industry, but there's also the demand side, which is the buildings and where the people live. Our job is to balance that and ensure that the routes that we have will accommodate the businesses that need to get to any one of these locations.
Thank you for that. And Local Law 189 required a DOT report to the council in which DOT committed to developing guidance for implementing a delivery service plan in partnership with building and property owners. Does New York City have a delivery service plan? If so, can you provide us with more information on how the plan was developed and how it will be implemented?
Yeah, so I think we'll get back to you on that. The, I think it was really DCAST that was tasked with the activity, Citywide Administrative Services. We, of course, supported them, but I don't think we have the details on the final result here.
Okay. The truck routes disproportionately burdened environmental justice communities. We know that emissions from trucks contribute to respiratory illness in communities adjacent to the truck route or where trucks frequently idle. Has DOT worked with the New York City Health and Hospitals to do an air quality study along the truck route?
So we do work closely with Health and Hospitals, and when they collect data, we look at how that relates, not just to truck routes specifically, but even to, you know, to environmental justice communities and industrial business zones. But, you know, I think what we've been really focusing on is trying to get the trucks on our street to be as few as possible, and then the ones that are there as polluting as little as possible. And maybe, Charles, you could talk a little bit about the Clean Trucks Program that really focuses on those communities.
Yes, one of the examples of, in fact, it's actually a pioneering example of where we took an initiative to target a particular community that we knew had reports of significant health impacts, that some of which-
Which community?
That would be the Hunts Point and Mot Haven community in the South Bronx. So we have the New York City Clean Trucks, actually initially was the Hunts Point Clean Trucks Program, by which we provided incentives to companies that are registered in that particular zip code, and we used, we gave them incentives, basically giving a rebate for them to purchase and get rid of the older, more diesel-polluting engines and ensure that these vehicles will access those communities at the, at least every two weeks, they must come in there. So we know that the benefits are accruing to those when we change these trucks to cleaner burning diesel engines, newer engines. Most of them are 2012 on newer engines. We also encourage them to transition to electric vehicles, you know, which are really clean burning. So far, we had, as of 2015, we had done 500 such retrofits. At this point, I think we are at about 600 and so engines that we have removed off the roadways. But as a general effort, we're also doing the Cross Bronx Expressway Study, which we call actually, they're imagining the Cross Bronx Expressway, which is ongoing at this time, to do a whole revisioning of that whole corridor to figure out how best we can reconnect communities, ensure that we provide incentives to clean the trucks that are running on that highway, and at the same time, work with the community to ensure that other health ailments, and by the way, Department of Health is a partner on the Cross Bronx Expressway with State DOT, Department of City Planning, and City DOT. So there are multiple ways by which we're working with Department of Health. We recognize the dangerous effects of trucks, but it's only one component of those health effects, and that's what we have been schooled by the Department of Health, that that's the way to address the issue.
And would DOT be open to doing such a study, an air quality study?
Yeah, I think we want to know more about the specifics of what you're looking for, but we agree that air quality is one of the major issues around truck traffic and environmental justice communities. So, you know, I think as I mentioned in the testimony, we're always inclined towards action rather than just study, but to the extent that more data can help support the action.
I feel the same, but I know the data is what informs the actions most of the time with DOT, or that's at least what you all testify most of the time, so.
Can I just add to that? I think especially to that issue, the Clean Trucks Program really was actually following the data. We knew that the Hunts Point community was one of those areas, or is one of those areas that has three times or more, based on the Health Department data, of asthma hospitalizations in the area. So when we applied for this project, it was based on that statistics, working with Community Board Two in South Bronx, and I think Councilmember Salamanca was working in that area.
I was there last week.
Okay, great.
It's a lot of work to be done. There's a lot of truck congestion in that area, as well as in Councilmember Fariah's district with the major throughways that go through that district, but-
Yes, and to the data that you pointed though, we also are expanding this study to, I'm sorry, this project to all citywide effort, because we did get VW settlement money, by which it was in 2020, we expanded the whole initiative to make sure that all industrial business zones in the city, most of which are adjacent to environmental justice communities, based on New York State Department of Environmental Conservation EJ criteria. So it makes them eligible for this. So we are really, this is a very effective program. We can, we would like to discuss more if necessary.
And when the truck route changes, like as you're looking at this now, there'll be legacy effects on those streets that were part of the old truck route? Those streets may need repaving or other remediation. How will the Department of Transportation make sure that such remediation takes place?
Yeah, it's a great question, and something that we think is critically important is that as we look at the truck route network, it won't just be about making, you know, changes to the rules and in the rulebook, but we do have to look at the specific streets and make sure that they are designed appropriately, whether it's a street that we're adding a truck route or a street that we're removing a truck route, you know, whether it needs new safety features, whether it needs resurfacing, you know, it could be that some of them need a full reconstruction that we would pursue with DDC, that making sure that those streets are capable of handling trucks or are designed to discourage trucks where appropriate, like that's part of it. It's not just about the rule, it's about the, looking at the design and the communications at the same time.
Thank you. Next, I want to talk about parking for trucks. So the increase in deliveries has exacerbated the problem of overnight truck parking in residential neighborhoods. Not only does it lead to unsafe conditions for all road users, it can also cause increased traffic congestion, increased emissions, and noise pollution for idling vehicles, particularly in outer borough neighborhoods near major freight hubs. What type of planning is DOT doing to ensure that there is an adequate amount of parking spaces for trucks? And has DOT applied for recently announced federal grants to assist with truck parking?
Sure, and we totally agree that this has become a much more serious issue in recent years, particularly with some of the federal law changes around hours of service rules. We have seen, you know, Southeast Queens, Southern Brooklyn, large parts of the Bronx, you know, not a comprehensive list by any means. And we know that it goes beyond DOT or beyond DOT and NYPD, because we can't enforce our way out of the issue, although enforcement is a piece of it. It's why we've really brought together this citywide task force that includes DCAST and includes EDC, some of these other agencies that are a little bit more experienced with some of the off-street parking issues, so that when we come back to all of you with a more detailed plan, it can be a serious plan that really looks at how we provide real opportunities for trucks to get off the street and park, while also making sure that we continue enforcement and continue doing what we need to do to deal with the day-to-day problem.
Does DOT work with JFK Airport and other freight hubs to ensure that there is adequate parking for trucks that service out of these areas? And what has been done and what can be done in the future, particularly for JFK, where significant investments have been made?
Thank you for the question. We see our partners at the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey as critical to be part of this conversation. I know we testified a few months ago or thereabout, but this is a critical part of that conversation. We are certainly thinking about how we can think about, how we can address this issue from the city side of things, if there are any opportunities for activating sites that are maybe city-owned. We also see this as a partnership with the private sector, because the city cannot do this alone. And more broadly, as we think about the longer-term solutions, we are also thinking about supporting federal funding opportunities that we can perhaps go after for standing up the longer-term truck parking facilities. But the short answer is yes, we are working very closely with the Port Authority as well as others, and city agencies to work through this solution, not just for Southeast Queens, but citywide.
What has the citywide task force on illegal parking done in terms of reducing illegal parking?
Yeah, so the task force hasn't come out with its recommendations yet, but maybe I'll talk to, just because we haven't come out with recommendations doesn't mean we're not doing anything either. Maybe I'll turn it over to my colleagues at PD to talk about how we're making sure that we are being responsive in the short term, even as we develop long-term answers.
Absolutely. I'm proud to be a member of the task force, fortunately with DOT as many other city agencies. And one of the short-term actions that have come out of it is the enforcement of the overnight truck parking in all boroughs. I am, it's somewhat good to report that towing and parking enforcement for overnight trucks that are parked in residential communities has risen very substantially. What the task force is able to do is track the 3-1-1 complaints and streamline them for us so we can conduct enforcement where it's needed most.
And Chair, I just want to add, when we have finally certified the recommendations from the task force, we'll be coming to you and the committee to make sure that everybody understands the recommendations so that we can partner on making sure that we address overnight truck parking.
So you have a timeline with that, in terms of when we can expect recommendations to start coming out?
Yeah, I think we've said spring, and we don't have a more specific date than that yet.
What type of staff and resources does the task force have?
So I think that the task force itself is really composed of resources from the agencies involved. They haven't hired sort of separate staff, but I think we can say, like, the agencies are taking this very seriously. Denise and her team have spent substantial effort from the DOT side, and I know commensurate from other agencies as well, to really look at how to solve this problem.
Okay, I'm going to just touch two more categories, and then I'm going to pass it to my colleagues to ask theirs, and then I'll do a round two. But in terms quickly of traffic safety, does DOT track as a part of Vision Zero the number of truck fatalities and serious injuries?
Absolutely. Part of our data-driven effort on Vision Zero is we look at, you know, where truck fatalities, where truck-driven injuries happen, you know, what parts of the city. One of the things that our freight team does is they focus on safety projects on corridors with high numbers of truck-related incidents. So, you know, one thing I'll say to be clear is that trucks are not an overly disproportionate amount of the fatalities on our streets. You know, varies a little bit year to year, but trucks cause fatalities about in proportion to their mix of vehicles on the street. So we do make sure that what we're doing is not just truck-focused, but is focused on making the streets safer for everybody, which also affects trucks. But one of the lenses through which we look is trying to make sure that if there are streets that are seeing a particularly number of truck-related injuries, that we make sure we do projects in those areas. So we want to make sure that as we redesign our streets, we're addressing truck issues, but addressing everything having to do with traffic crashes as well.
Out of the crashes that you have recorded as a part of Vision Zero, do you have an idea in terms of what proportion of those accidents are on the truck route versus off of the truck route?
Our previous analysis indicated about 68% of the crashes, or I'm sorry, injuries were on truck routes, designated truck routes.
And just as a reminder, those truck routes, we again try and cite on those widest corridors, so they tend to also happen to be the busiest places throughout the city.
For 2022 and year-to-date, what are the current statistics on truck fatalities and serious injuries?
All right, so for 2022, there were 42 fatalities that involved a truck out of 259 total fatalities citywide, and there were 111 truck-involved severe injuries out of 2,734 severe injuries citywide.
And when compared to previous years, what type of trends are you seeing? What are your estimates for future years?
Well, we want those numbers to come down, right? They, you know, if the number is not zero, then it's too high.
But what are the trends?
So the trend has been a little bit all over the place. The previous year, 2021, had fewer truck-related fatalities at 23 out of 273. But overall, they had been higher in prior years. In 2019, it had been 37 truck-involved fatalities, in 2017, 40. So we have not seen a particular up or down trend around truck-related fatalities in particular, but that's not the trend we want. The trend we want is downward, and so we do, we have to lean in even harder to make sure that the numbers are going down, not staying level.
Okay, and then the last category questions that I'm going to ask for now is Neighborhood Loading Zone Program. In July of 2019, the city implemented the Neighborhood Loading Zone Pilot Program in response to the increase in e-commerce deliveries on residential streets and for higher vehicle trips throughout the city. In an effort to reduce double parking and unwanted standing behavior and to create a safer and more efficient environment for all road users, the Neighborhood Loading Zone Program provides space at the curb during the daytime and evening hours for package zone, excuse me, for package deliveries by commercial vehicles, taxi and care service, pickup and drop-off, and active loading and unloading of personal vehicles. The program was specifically designed to reduce conflicts between trucks and cyclists while also providing bus, excuse me, improving bus travel times. DOT's website currently lists 361 zones in the program. Is this figure correct?
Just first, thank you for a very excellent description of the program. I think you got it just right. I'll turn it over to Denise to talk about the numbers.
Thanks, Eric. And so as of April of 2023, there are currently 330 Neighborhood Loading Zones installed citywide, 145 of which we've installed last year, just last year alone. And we also have about, up to about 150 have been installed so far this year, and another 100 are pending installation.
You said 50 or 150?
50 have been installed so far this year, and 100 are pending installation as we speak. So within the next few months, those will likely be implemented as well.
Can you also let me know where these zones primarily exist?
So these zones are-
Do you want to go to the new website?
Yeah, so we, just last week with the announcement and- Yeah, so we, just last week with the announcement and the launch of our loading zone report, we have a publicly accessible map that's interactive. You can go on the website, newyorkcity.gov/loading, and you'll be able to find out where the zones are installed. Generally, they are in more residential areas, they're spread out across the city, we have them footprint in every borough.
What's like the numbers per borough?
We can get back to you on that, on the details.
Do you think someone can find that out while we're going through the rest of the questions? Thank you. And can you repeat the website again, please?
NewYorkCity.gov/loading.
How does, how has DOT worked with communities and elected officials to keep neighborhoods informed about this program, and what feedback have you received from community members?
Right, so as we do new loading zones, we typically work with the council member. We also notify the community board and take feedback. You know, we know that these need to be where, in appropriate places all over the city, so we, you know, we try to make it a balance between not just asking, you know, do you want it here, but we try to say like, is this, is there a reason this place doesn't work? Is there another place that might make sense? But we do get a lot of feedback, and that feedback varies tremendously neighborhood to neighborhood. I think we've had some neighborhoods that have been very excited by the program and have wanted more, and other neighborhoods that have been very concerned about parking laws or other changes. I think as they've gone in, we've tended to see people appreciate it and appreciate the lower double parking, but we know that it's a new, it's new and it's a change, and so we try to like really work with communities to, that they understand why we're doing it and make sure we get appropriate feedback on if it's problematic someplace, maybe we can look someplace else instead.
How does DOT balance this program with ensuring that parking for private vehicles is not dramatically decreased?
Yeah, it's a challenge because we're not, not making more curb space, so everything that we're doing is about how we manage that curb space as well as we can. And, you know, typically when we do a neighborhood loading zone, it's in effect something like 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM Monday through Friday, and then returns to residential parking in the evenings when people might come back from work and on the weekends, and try to balance it that way. But part of it is that we're dealing with the reality of this huge increase in residential deliveries, and it's space that we feel is still really serving the residents of that community. It's not space that's serving sort of an outside entity, so we try to make it work as best we can for every community in which we work.
And, sorry, we have the numbers by borough if that's ready.
Please.
Okay, so the highest number of loading zones are in Queens, 115, Brooklyn, 104, Manhattan, 81, the Bronx, 51, and Staten Island, 18.
Thank you. And this question is for DOT and NYPD. How do you enforce the loading zone program? Is it summonses? Is it boots on vehicles? Is it impoundment?
Sure, they provided us with the list of those locations, and we have the traffic agents go there, and if they see a violation, they start off by issuing a summons, but yes, the vehicle would also be eligible for a boot or a tow. But primarily, it's enforced with parking summonses.
And after you receive, like, and you observe that a truck may have two summonses, for example, on the windshield, how soon is it that you escalate to booting or towing that vehicle? And what allows for that level of discernment from NYPD to take that, those steps?
Sure, if I heard you correctly, you said if the truck has multiple summons on it?
Yeah, like if you, because sometimes you walk past these trucks and they have like more than one.
Right, okay, right. For the loading zones that are for trucks only, we mostly focus on the cars, but for other truck violations, it really does depend on the space and the availability of that tow, if it's a large truck. And that's why, very fortunately, as we mentioned, the Truck Parking Task Force kind of coordinates and groups the complaints to us, so we can really get those trucks that have been there that have two or three summonses, two or three complaints, and we can go to that same neighborhood and get multiple trucks on the same night and bring them to a designated location, rather than, like you said, keep on putting another summons on it, which addresses the condition, yes, but it really doesn't permanently rectify it.
And where are you seeing most of the summonses being issued?
Sure, when it comes to the trucks, it is citywide. Some of the hotspots is Southern Brooklyn, Southeast Queens, and the Central and South Bronx, as well as parts of Northern Queens as well. That's where a lot of the complaints and the residents are voicing it to us.
And what long-term solutions has DOT considered for making the loading zone pilot program permanent?
Sure, and I think at this point, we don't view it as a pilot. We really do view it as a permanent program and part of our toolbox. But one of the things that we're doing is we've, we're in the process of creating a new traffic rule that we think better describes the situation. For anyone who's familiar with our neighborhood loading zones, the regulatory sign often says "no parking." And from a regulatory perspective, that's appropriate because it allows loading and unloading of goods, but people in a community don't always know what that is. They say, "Why did you take away my parking and put up 'no parking'?" And instead, the new rule will let us put up signs that say "loading zone," which we think is much more clear about what that space is meant to be used for in a way that we think our legal rules can better match our public communications about the program. So even as it's a permanent program, we do think it can be better than how we've done it so far in terms of making that space clearer to the public.
Thank you. Now I'll yield the rest of my questions for now and call on Councilmember Narcisse.
Thank you, thank you, Chair, and thank you for being here, Deputy Commissioner. I believe in all of you that's here. I appreciate your time. Now by talking, since we're always talking about the waterway, I'm wondering, is Ferry Sound somewhere that we can do more transportation when it comes to our delivery? Is that in the plan?
So, so, so yes, it is, and I'll turn it over to Denise to talk details, but not every piece of freight can be moved by water, but we think more can be than is today, and that's something that we are actively pursuing with our colleagues at EDC.
Thanks, Eric, and thanks for the question. Approximately 8% of our freight comes in by water. We certainly think that there are opportunities to reduce our over-reliance on trucking in the long term, and we've announced our program, the Blue Highways Program, which is a multi-year partnership with EDC and the private sector. This looks at in-depth practices, understanding the challenges, the barriers for shifting more goods to come in by water. The city has also been thinking about what are the infrastructure investments that will likely be needed to accommodate those shifts by water, and thinking about how do we create that network, that hub and spoke system. So as Eric announced in his testimony earlier today, we'll be releasing a solicitation later this year that calls on marine operators and freight operators who are interested in operating marine or doing, moving freight by water to respond to that RFI, and we'll be then setting up a pilot program. There are certainly more opportunities for us to drive more incentives, and we're, we'll be thinking about what levels the city has to shift more freight by water.
That's good. I just wanted one question. Do you, do you track the summons that giving right now to the trucks that parks on our streets?
Yes, yes, we do.
And is there, there's a rises on the summonses that get, giving to the trucks now?
Yes, we're seeing this year a rise in moving violations. That means when they're operating the truck, and we're also seeing a rise when the truck is parked, as well as a rise in towing them. So we're seeing rises across the board in enforcement.
And how much are the summonses that you're giving?
Sure, so the parking summonses overall is a little over 161,000. The moving violation is approximately 7,500. Those would be the summonses.
The trucks that park?
Yes.
The trucks that park on our street? Because right now, in the Canarsie area, and I know people calling me from Queens, how many in total that have you towed? Because I've seen them parking for, for months, for years, some of them.
Okay, so in Southern Brooklyn area, and this is more than just the Canarsie area...
Flatlands area?
Sure, to those vehicles, large trucks that are parked, is approximately 4,400 this year in Southern Brooklyn. That is not toes, that is the parking summonses. The toes in that area would be approximately, with the boots around 21.
Thank you, please keep on removing them, because that's the most complaint that I get every day.
And we're also happy to sort of field those specific problematic locations, so please feel free to share that with us and we'll...
And is the sanitation thing too? Because it's dirty. It gathers all the wind that blow all the garbage on the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Restler.
Great, I didn't see that one coming. I firstly just, well, let me firstly just thank our Chair for her leadership and bringing attention to this issue and for the great pieces of legislation from Councilmember Aviles and Farias that I strongly support. I, I also want to thank the Deputy Inspector. I think you are the single most responsive person in the entire police department. I don't know how you're on top of every issue across all of our districts and precincts, but like there's no issue too small, and you literally are on top of it in real time every time, and I really appreciate it. You're just...
Thank you.
A tremendous public servant, and I...
It's a privilege to serve. I know how important it is to hear from the community, and I appreciate you kind of packaging up all those complaints, as well as the other councilmembers, and giving it to me so we can take action.
I have an infinite number of complaints, I do. I'm a, I'm, my professional job is to be annoying, but you helped solve them, and my community really deeply appreciates it. I hadn't realized you'd been promoted from captain to deputy inspector, so congratulations. I apologize for, for not catching that sooner. There are a couple of things I wanted to ask about today, though, on trucks. Oh, I'm already at 47 seconds. I was, I regret being nice every time. So firstly, just can I ask for really quick answers? So on the, I was excited about that big apps challenge, or the apps challenge you guys did earlier this year. What's the current status of the app and how soon until DOT can require all trucks to use it?
Thanks for the question. It's still in the development, and we're continuing to work with our university partners and thinking about enhancements.
Any more specific timing update that you can give than that?
We can get back to you on the details.
Okay. I, I, there was also a previous hackathon, I think it was 2019, that led to the development of an online tool. The DOT was using cameras to detect 53-foot trailers. What's the status of that? All of, I mean, all of us get an inordinate amount of complaints about these trucks that are illegal on our streets, and it feels like unless we're able to get the Deputy Inspector's attention and that enforcement, we're not getting the responsiveness that we need. I really strongly support automated enforcement here. We're excited that you all have been pursuing some of these apps, but want to see more aggressive and swift implementation.
Yeah, I think we're really on the same page there. I think we've done a lot of really good testing of technology in a lot of different arenas, and the technology has gotten a lot better. As, as you all know, we need permission from Albany to do anything around automated enforcement, and, you know, there's things we're pushing for this year, there'll be things we're pushing for in future years. We think more automated enforcement is absolutely the future of how to really get at a lot of these issues.
Automated enforcement for illegal 53-foot trucks on our streets requires Albany legislation?
Yes.
And have we, has the administration been actively been pushing for changes this session?
So as you're well aware, we're in the midst of negotiating that budget that is, you know, a couple days late at this point, but I think we're not opposed to things like this, that, you know, as somebody that has had their vehicle destroyed by a 53-footer, I think it's a lot of energy that we can be focusing on there.
Okay, I know I'm over time, so thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Williams, followed by Councilmember Lewis.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks for being here. I just wanted to go back to the overnight slash illegal trucking task force. Can you provide some more details? For instance, who's the main driver, like which agency?
Can I take that, Denise?
Thank you. The task force is being led by the Mayor's Office of Operations, and the other agencies, including DOT, includes EDC, DCAST, NYPD, Department of City Planning, DSNY, as well as the Sheriff's Office.
So is it the Mayor's Office of Operations that is actually like corralling everybody?
Yes, we, we...
Who's, who's, who's in charge of that office?
Daniel Steinberg is the Director of the Mayor's Office.
Daniel?
Steinberg.
Steinberg? Okay. Another question I have in terms of like the work of the task force, how are you all working between agencies? As an example, I love how DOT kicked it to the NYPD to talk about the Band-Aid, the amazing Band-Aid stuff that they've been doing, but we really know that it needs more comprehensive solutions to really get to the root of the problem. And so how are you sort of cross-coordinating between the various agencies that play a role in this to ensure that you're taking into account a myriad of things, like federal regulations? Are you also in active conversations with the Trucking Association as well?
Great questions, and we certainly rely on the strengths of a lot of the agencies that are part of the task force and really what makes the most sense in terms of their contributions, particularly in looking at our survey of publicly available assets or city, or lots that could potentially be used for truck parking. But it requires a lot more thinking beyond that, you know, working with our partners at PD, as well as DSNY. They've been able to provide us with a targeted information on where enforcement is happening today, but also doing an analysis of 3-1-1 complaints, et cetera, to match our efforts for enforcement with where the actual complaints are, and really making those sort of whole and thinking about how we target it in our interventions. To your question about the longer-term solutions, I think this is where we see the opportunity for the short-term sort of quick fixes and responses, as well as the longer-term planning and coordination that's needed to build the appropriate off-street infrastructure. That requires making sure that our regional transportation plan, our vision plan, includes lists about truck parking. But we also recognize that this is a national safety issue, a national issue of concern. Secretary Pete Buttigieg talked about this as a safety issue first and foremost. We are working very closely with the trucking industry to help promote industry surveys, to help get the information and messaging out to truck drivers about the rules for operating in New York City, particularly for not parking overnight. We also are working with the industry to collect a list of locations for truck parking, off-street, legal truck parking facilities, and making sure that we can make that more public, more widely available to truck drivers. I think increasing more awareness and outreach could really help to drive the message home for the folks that do want to comply. We know that they are bad apples, and we're work with our enforcement agents to root those out. But it's first and foremost a safety issue, we want to make sure that we're providing legal spaces off-street for truck drivers to rest. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, for this very important hearing, and thank you all for being here to testify today. Some of my questions were answered, so I have follow-ups based on testimony, and I'll be really quick before the Chair, using my time. So the first question, I'll just say the questions and then you guys can respond afterwards. So this is in response to you, Deputy Commissioner Beaton. You said that DOT, this is regarding Intro 708. In your statement, you stated that DOT is seeking to retain discretion to determine implementation and identifying daylighting intersections near truck route networks. So I wanted to know what formula and tool, you did go a little bit into this, but you didn't specifically state what formula and tool is being used by DOT to determine viability of daylighting areas as opposed to others. And I bring that up because, and I'm raising this concern here for the record, because there are different truck route areas that are not considered truck route areas where we have several fatalities. So as you shared the numbers today, it lets me know that there's something probably wrong with the formula or tool. And the second question is in regards to Intro 924 on the study Street Design. Your testimony suggested that additional efforts in reporting and writing would be better... better spent focusing on solutions. And I wanted to know what were those solutions that DOT had that you all wanted to share with us regarding this particular bill? Because maybe that could help strengthen the bill a little bit. I think the bill is great, but maybe your solutions could help strengthen it more. So those are my two questions. Thank you.
Sure, thanks. And in some ways they're really related questions because they're both about street design and how we think about street design for trucks. So around daylighting and obviously daylighting is a subject that's come up many times over the years, we have some concerns that if used in the wrong places, daylighting can make some intersections less safe and you know, there are many different types of intersections, but one example is something that we've found is particularly dangerous is vehicles making turns too fast, right? If you're turning very slowly, you have a good chance to watch for pedestrians crossing the street. If you turn fast, you're much more likely to hit someone and if you hit someone, much more likely to cause severe injury or death. We've reduced the ability of vehicles to turn fast in part by tightening those corners a little bit by saying you have to turn slowly because that corner is actually kind of sharp. If we daylight the corner and do it without doing other physical interventions, then it actually makes it easier for, for vehicles to turn more quickly. And in particular along truck routes, it can make it easier for trucks to turn off of the truck route onto perhaps the street where it shouldn't be. You know, daylighting is also something often used to make it easier for trucks to make turns. And so thinking back to your other question, we can do things like make corner radii tighter so that it's physically harder for a truck to make a turn onto a street where it shouldn't be. We can use one-way conversions so that, you know, a truck or another vehicle can get on a block if it really needs to be there, but it can't drive a whole length along a block because a block goes the wrong way. We can use speed humps and other speed reducers to, to reduce the ability of trucks to travel on those streets. In most cases, we can't totally prohibit trucks because there's a garbage truck or there's other things that need to be on that street, but we can make the street much less attractive to trucks, that it's not a good cut through anymore. And we use a lot of the data that Denise talked about to try to identify places that are seeing particularly large amounts of these, of off-road truck activity and use that toolbox.
Thank you, and I think street cushions would be helpful if you could be a little bit more generous and less stingy with those and, and the requests that we make, but thank you for that information. I'll hand it back over to the Chair.
Thank you. Next we'll hear from Councilmember Aviles, followed by Councilmember Farias.
Thank you Chair, I have so many questions all over the place, so I'm going to use, try to use my time expeditiously, but I'll be back. In terms of the, I'd, I'd love to hear more explanation around the requirements for Kappa as it relates to your concerns in one of the bill in terms of the public notification.
Sure, and, and I'm not the agency lawyer, so I'm not, I can't recite chapter and verse of Kappa, but basically there's a very specific process for changing rules, which includes our truck routes about how we release them, how we publish them, how we have public hearings. And so we're not inherently against some of the suggestions in the bill about having public interaction, we just want to make sure we're not doing it in a duplicative way. So I think we can have a good conversation about how to line those up.
So despite being an expert, you cited, so do you think what is currently used is robust enough?
So I think that for what you're talking about, we, we need more public outreach than is, than what is required in Kappa. I think we just want to make sure that we're not like having two hearings a week apart to satisfy two slightly different legal processes. You know, that if there's something required by Kappa, we should make it useful. If there's more that we want to do on top of that, that's reasonable, we just want to make sure it's efficient.
Sure, I definitely would like to make, ensure that public input is, is meaningful and certainly we are not wasting anyone's time. We, we have way too much work to do for our city. So I look forward to seeing what the specifications are and comparison on what is more efficient and robust and-
Yeah.
-and the goal that it, that it actually-
For sure, and we're happy to have a conversation too, yeah.
Great, in terms of the, we talk a lot about last mile, dang, that was very quick.
I guess we can't talk last mile.
We talk a lot about water freight and in particular, we have, you know, hundreds of miles of coastline. We have very minimal number of actual ports that receive goods and yourself mentioned 8% of, of moving our goods is done by the water. Can you tell me, given Red Hook container ports' importance to the region, not only and to New York City in terms of goods and services, what specifically beyond an RFI, is the city committed to investing in maintaining and bringing that port to its full capacity?
So I think for, for that, to have a more robust conversation of that, we'll likely need to have our partners at EDC as well as the Port Authority to be a part of that conversation. We're not in the driving seat, but we were working very closely with EDC on that.
Yeah, what I'm trying to get at is how, how, how hard is our city driving or asking for investment in that port, given its material importance to the city? As one of the few ports in New York City that's operational and we saw that, how important that was during the pandemic, lack of refrigeration in the city, only having, what, three days of food possible? And yet our city is anemically investing or not clearly articulating the critical nature of investing and ensuring that our ports are not only working, but we're maximizing them for a city of 8 million people. I don't see the match.
Yeah, those are all very good points. I think it's just that relationship is really managed by EDC, so we don't have the people here who can speak well to it.
I'm going to let my colleagues answer and we'll be back.
Hi everyone, thank you so much for being here today and participating and answering everyone's questions. I'm going to try to speed through mine, if not, I'll be back for round two. How frequently have we revisited the major or minor truck routes happening locally when we reroute streets or add bike lanes, reconfigure roadways, or include any of our like pedestrian spaces? Like how often are we revising those truck routes?
So the answer is very rarely to, in some cases, almost never. And there are places where we've done like a one-way conversion on a, on a truck route and having created one that goes the other direction and that's, we agree that it makes sense to take a look.
Yeah, so they, so we're not comprehensively looking at our streets, we're kind of targeting it by when an issue comes up or revision comes up, we do that and then see down the line when it's flagged that like a truck route is maybe like now de-mapped in a way or not connecting?
Right, I, I think our, our team has a, a list of, of those types of places, but because we haven't really addressed the, the truck route network, many of them are actually just still missing links.
Got it.
I'd also, I'll also add that we, through our coordination process, we also think about sort of making sure that we can still accommodate deliveries, particularly on truck routes that may get a street redesign, that is still part of our process to ensure that loading zones are provided, that there's still safe accommodation for delivery vehicles.
Yeah, I'm more so thinking of like some of our minor truck routes that go through local streets, obviously when we, I under, completely understand it makes sense that when we're impacting a commercial district or a commercial zone or, or anything like that, that we are taking that into consideration. What has been the conversation or commitments, if any at all, from other municipalities like Long Island, Westchester County, or even State Department of Transportation to help alleviate the burden of knowing that New York City is taking on most of our transportation and logistics outward?
I mean, I'd say we regularly talk to our colleagues. I don't, I don't think that any of them are anxious to take problems off of our hands.
Okay.
We'll come back to you.
Okay, I'll be back.
We'll have Councilmember Williams, followed by Aviles, followed, oh, sorry, Councilmember Lee, sorry, followed by Councilmember Williams.
Thank you. Actually, I'll be quick because a lot of my colleagues have already asked my questions, but I just wanted to say first of all, thank you so much because we all know this is a multi-pronged approach, it's not just enforcement, it's just, it's not the truck routes and so it takes, it takes a village, that's for sure. So I want to thank all of you for your hard work and effort. And I guess I just wanted to piggyback off of Councilmember Aviles's question about the Kappas, Kappas? Because the thing that, the thing that strikes me in the testimony is the part where it says, "In areas where we do not have truck routes, truck drivers can still travel to get to their final destinations, but may do so on any street that provides a direct connection without regard to the size or land use on that street and will do so as they serve homes and businesses all over the city." So I guess my question is, and correct me if I'm wrong in terms of my interpretation of that, is that they have discretion in terms of which streets to go on, as long as it's seen as a direct connection, is that correct?
Right, so essentially a truck is supposed to use the truck route network to get as close as possible to its final destination and then can use local streets. But if, if a particular destination is far from truck routes, there may be many different routes that get you back to a truck route and a trucker will just take whatever looks best. And you know, the point of truck routes is really to try to keep them on a more limited set of streets as long as possible.
Right, okay. And, and the only thing, final thing I'll mention is that I know that, you know, you mentioned you're looking, you know, you're willing to work with us on the feedback piece of it and I would highly recommend, you know, because we know that, I think, I believe the last one you said was in 2018 and that was in Lower Manhattan, but you know, we all know that after COVID, the truck routes have, and the, the amount of goods that are coming in have changed drastically and so, you know, there are different parts of the city that are very different, like Eastern Queens versus Western Queens is totally different. So if we can talk about having, and again, I don't know what the, what the process isn't even changing, the Kappa process, but if there's a way to have multiple hearings or feedback, community listening sessions in each borough, I think that would be great because, you know, the, I'm in a transit desert, for example, so you have to use a lot of cars and trucks to get around anywhere in my district, not the railways or any other transportation. So it, it would look different in each district and so if you could work with us on that, that would be awesome.
Sure, and, and to be clear, I, I really don't mean to imply that Kappa means we can't do other public outreach. It's more just, we want to, there are specific things we need to do and we want to make sure that anything aligns where, where possible.
Let me also add that with regard to that Kappa process, the rules that when we present them, a lot of them are actually based on the feedback we've already received from various constituencies. I think we cited the one with Staten Island, it was based on the input from the business community as well as the community districts in the area. So it's not as if there's no, there is, right, yes, thank you.
Thank you, and next we'll hear from Councilmember Narcisse, followed by Williams.
One other thing I forgot to ask, do you have a special unit in the NYPD that are assigned to take care of that since it's such a, problems that we all face in New York City?
Yes, we have, within the Traffic Enforcement District-
Yes.
-we have a towing operations section that has regular duty tow trucks as well as the large, heavy-duty tow trucks that can take care of the trucks that are parked overnight. Within the NYPD, we also have motor carrier safety units that's really specialized in truck violations such as the over width, over length, and especially the overweight.
Okay, so how many incident, because there's many times that I see trucks pass by where they're not supposed to be on the street that have low wires. So how many incident do you have where you have wires coming out of and people calling? Do you have any report on that?
Well, I don't have that, no, about the wires, no.
Do you have an increased penalties for repeat offenders that, you know, for the truck drivers that either parks or getting tickets on the road?
Yes, there are certain violations that have escalating penalties, most notably certain codes within the overnight truck parking, Code 6 would be the most notable, as well as, I mentioned, we have some specially trained motor carrier safety units. They have access and enforce federal motor carrier safety regulations and there's a database that actually tracks it. So if that particular driver or company got multiple violations with, for the same offense, the fine scale would escalate, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna, not gonna take too long, but I have people watching and they keep telling me, I mean, they just told me that twice, that I forgot to mention Shipset Bay having the same problem as well, and Garrison Beach. So thank you.
Due note, for the folks that are watching, we look forward to helping out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to go back to the overnight illegal trucking task force. Would it be possible to get a briefing? So I know you guys are going to do recommendations, so maybe I'll leave you alone. You said spring, it's kind of about to be spring, so if we could get a briefing within the next couple of months, that would be great because it's hard to ask detailed nuanced questions in a hearing. And I've asked the administration multiple times before you guys created the task force, I suggested that you created the task force, you created the task force, never circle back to us, and there's no details on what's actually happening with the task force. So can we get a briefing?
So I believe we're in, close enough to be making recommendations fairly shortly and we would love to give you the, the full detailed accounting of those recommendations, so yes.
Great, great. The other question I have is for the NYPD. Can you talk a little bit about the sustainability of what you're doing? Because I know I've had tons of conversations with chiefs and inspectors at precincts and, you know, from what they've told me, there's a true capacity issue. And I know that in Southeast Queens specifically, want to thank Chief Williams for identifying a specific location where you are temporarily staging trucks, but can you talk about the, the sustainability? Because what you're doing right now is not sustainable. It's great and we love it, but it's not sustainable. So could you talk about how the department has been looking at doing robust, sustainable enforcement? I know this is not a budget hearing, but are there any like budget ask or allocations of resources specifically for the trucking unit? Because there's not a lot of trucks, there's only a few people that are actually like have a CDL license to even drive the trucks, necessary to tow the trucks, it's like a compile issue. So if you could share?
Absolutely. Great point you brought up about the limited capacity, I'll speak to that in a minute. So we do, as mentioned, have a certain amount of tow truck drivers that are trained to drive the heavy-duty tow trucks, but of course, we're conducting enforcement to try to get to the ultimate goal of 100% compliance. Now, we do have three tow pounds that are designated and as the chiefs mentioned, they were absolutely correct, they are at capacity. So as you alluded to, we did, very fortunately, with some of the help of the council here, get some space temporarily in Southeast Queens. I won't mention the location here publicly, but we did get some space. That is a temporary measure as we work towards the task force ultimate goal of finding enough truck parking and as they mentioned, we look forward to sharing those results with you.
And I hope also you're looking at long-term solutions for towing storage because even abandoned vehicles, even when we want to get vehicles off the street, capacity for tow trucks or space when cars or trucks are towed is unavailable. So is the department also looking at that? Because I know a lot of the tow pound areas were closed the last couple of years, so are you guys-
In short, absolutely, yes, we are.
Okay, I just have one very quick question about JFK. I know through the JFK redevelopment, they're going to be building out new cargo space and I know you said you're working with the Port Authority of New York, New Jersey, but if you can give us some more details on what the nature of that coordination is. A few years ago, I sat in a meeting, EDC was not, was in the meeting, not DOT, and the coordination didn't seem as robust as I felt it should be considering that the city owns the airport property and pretty much owns a lot of the space around the airport. So what is the, the coordination with the city and the Port Authority to really supporting the truck infrastructure around the airport and coming into the airport?
Sure, so, so like, like you say, because EDC is sort of the leaseholder for the airports, they do typically take the lead on, on those discussions. We do work, work with them, you know, we, we review the environmental review, we, we work on several of our neighborhood studies around that area, have, have focused on sort of the immediate environs of JFK. As we think about our potential truck route changes, certainly an area we'll want to take a look at, because we, we've done a lot of safety work on some of the major streets around the airport. So I think we do coordinate, EDC is just in the lead for, for the city on that work.
Okay, I hope like when you guys have your task force meetings, that you do think about it in that way too, because there might be some current opportunities that are not being taken advantage of specifically around JFK if there's not a coordinated effort to work not only with the various city agencies, but you know, a bi-state agency that is also playing a role or can play a more critical role involving trucks. Thanks Chair.
Thank you so much for that. Next is Councilmember Aviles, followed by Farias, and then I'll go into my second round of questions.
Great, thank you Chair.
In circling back to intro 708, and the potential of looking at redesigning the truck network. Theoretically, let's say we pass this piece of legislation, can you walk us through what the process would look like in a timeframe?
Sure. So I'll start, and then Denise or Charles, if either of you want to add, can. But first of all, we're not starting from zero on this, right? We've heard a lot of community feedback. We've also done some of our own analysis to identify some places around the city where we feel like there's some need. I think, you know, we'll work with you on the details, but we'll want to have a public outreach component of the process, where we take other feedback on places that we might not have heard about, or, you know, places of concern. And we would take all of that feedback in, and then we would come back to the public with something like a draft set of changes. So we would make a proposal where we think, you know, we would add these, remove these, and I think we would want to present that to the public for feedback.
Would you expect two years, three years, 15 years?
Well, it depends a little bit on how the feedback goes, but I think at the shorter end of that range, you know, something like one to two years from when we get started.
I think what I'm trying to get at is a little bit of managing expectations. I mean, to get a speed bump takes us four years. I'm a little concerned that this is going to be even longer. And the environment continues to change, and I understand you're obviously not operating from zero. You have quite a bit of data. So in terms of, I understand the administration's concern around retaining discretion for daylighting. And neighborhoods are different, have different requirements. Can you walk us through what some of the considerations for daylighting? And if, in fact, I've seen throughout my district, where the exit to the highway is giant tractor trailers, not being, it is the truck route, and they cannot make turns. And there is daylighting there, but there are cars parked in the daylighting. Or it's empty, and they still can't make the turn, because they're riding into the bike lane.
Right.
What criteria is used to even make, to approve that?
Right. So, and that makes the point very well. The intersections around the city are different from each other, and we don't have sort of one size fits all. We do this at this 10,000 intersections and do this at this 10,000. Like, we do need to look at them individually. And even if we do daylighting, should it be 20 feet or 30 feet, or, you know, what's the right design? I think it's really safety and access. Like, our first concern at all times has to be, are we keep designing the streets in a way that is safe? That we're, you know, getting the benefits of daylighting in terms of visibility without having a negative effect on turning speeds or other things that might be problematic for safety?
So like on the current route, does DOT go back and assess their hearing crashes? And they've already instituted, let's say, a daylighting zone to try to improve safety, but it's clearly not working?
Yeah.
How often is DOT going back to look at these intersections and adjust the design?
Yeah, I mean, we adjust tens and tens of thousands of regulations a year, including daylighting. So if you're seeing an issue, we're happy to go back and look at that particular location. But we do regularly revisit places around the city when we get feedback.
I'd also add that oftentimes, there may be issues that maybe corridor type of treatment may be needed. And so I think Eric mentioned this at the beginning, and as part of his testimony, we look at corridors that have higher incidences of truck-related crashes and think about other types of safety interventions to make those corridors safer. That could also be a designated truck route, or it could be a non-truck route. So that's part of our sort of thinking and sort of toolkit as well.
Thank you for that. And the important element I actually wanted to hear exactly on this issue of the corridor. My district is home to Third Avenue, a notoriously dangerous truck route in an industrial, mixed residential industrial manufacturing district. Notorious, and I say over 30 years, multiple federal investments. What concrete things has DOT done to improve safety on Third Avenue? Because I cannot see them. And the continued amount of crashes and fatalities on Third Avenue also bears no evidence of any improvements.
Right. So right now, we are undertaking, as you know, a major Third Avenue study, you know, both looking at under the highway, as well as the farther north as you get into Gowanus. And we agree that's a street where there's a safety problem, and it's indeed of changes. We have done some things on Third Avenue. We restriped the area around, under the highway to narrow the lanes and create better safety buffers. A few years ago, we've done a number of street improvement projects, such as where the new schools are going in near 59th Street. We've worked on better lighting near 36th Street. So I wouldn't say that we've totally ignored it, but we also fully agree there's more to do. And that's why we really, rather than just sort of treat it intersection at a time, are taking that full corridor look.
So I appreciate that, and I realize I'm way past my time. I appreciate the paint on the floor, that is certainly helpful. The lighting, it feels very piecemeal. You put extra lights in front of Industry City, and the rest of the corridor is dark. You paint in front of the school, but the rest of the corridor, it doesn't have, like, visible stripes on the floor. I don't understand the piecemeal implementation of any kind of safety. In fact, the BQE is getting repaired by the state, which took out most of the lighting under there. Nothing. I don't, I appreciate that this study, after decades of requests from our community, is finally being implemented, as is will be Red Hook. It is the pace of these issues and the urgency which we still fail to see. And I want to see a full, comprehensive implementation of a corridor, not two blocks here, six years later, one block at the end. A full implementation that is cohesive. I know that's what I think is a lot of frustration for many council members across the city. So I think with that, I have more questions later.
We hear you.
Councilmember Parias?
And like the Terminator, I'm back, y'all. Okay, really quickly, how do you folks envision, and this is to the PD, envision traffic enforcement's role in managing illegal street parking that interferes with where and how trucks can move, deliver, sort goods? I mean, I'm not just talking about outer boroughs issues either. I mean, my borough is impacted definitely by a lot of this, but also, you know, coming to work when I drive. If there are certain streets in Manhattan, even right here down on Broadway, where there's Amazon trucks, FedEx trucks that are pulled over, you know, blocking an entire roadway. And I rarely see traffic enforcement happening in the island of Manhattan.
Okay. So that's a very good point you bring up. Somebody mentioned a little while ago about the truck not being able to turn because there was a car illegally parked in the turning lane, and then the truck was forced in the bike lane. So DOT, as we know, is doing an excellent job with reengineering and making safety improvement. But some of those is only as good as the enforcement to make sure that they are kept for their designated use. For example, a bike lane must be clear for it to work for cyclists. So this year, we've issued approximately 2.4 million parking summonses citywide, with granted a heavy part of that being in the borough of Manhattan. So I can assure you that our traffic agents are out there enforcing it. But yes, more needs to be done, and we look forward to that. You mentioned about the Amazon truck and UPS truck not being able to access the curb and wind up blocking the whole street. That could be because a car is illegally parked in maybe a truck loading zone. So I need to get that car out of there and make sure that person doesn't go back through enforcement, booting, towing. Clearly, enforcement is the most forward-facing issue of that.
Yeah, so my follow-up is going to be, do we anticipate traffic enforcement needing more resources regarding the increasing of these issues, or just to address them? I mean, I can name a handful of blocks just surrounding City Hall where there's no standing signs or no parking signs, and there are cars parked with or without permits. But I know in Manhattan, permits are not used in no standing or no parking. So are we anticipating more enforcement needed, or?
So, I'm glad you brought it up. We could use as much as we can get, we do have some vacancies currently. Before I come here asking for more resources, we do have vacancies within our traffic agent ranks. I could send you something to put out to social media that maybe you can help us get, because we have some great traffic agents, many from immigrant communities, and we could use more to fill our ranks. But we currently have vacancies, and we do want to fill those so we can duck more enforcement.
And with the call for pegs additionally that the mayor has recently asked for, are those vacancies going to remain, or are you anticipating removing them?
So I mean, I think that is something that our budget team is still working on, how to figure out how to get through the 4% pegs. So I can't, today, we can't tell you exactly.
TBD.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. And can I ask one follow-up? I'm sorry. Okay, and just a follow-up to Councilmember Aviles's question. Do you folks reevaluate the corridors and intersections without complaints or without 301 complaints? Like, if an accident happens, does that trigger a reevaluation of the street corridor? I just want a clarification on that, because I know we are a reactive city because we don't have enough enforcement that can just happen on its own. And so most times when an issue comes up, you have to call the complaint in. So are we doing that, like, if someone gets hit or a fatality happens, then we reevaluate, or do we?
Well, we try to do both, right? We want to be as proactive as possible. We want to redesign streets before there's an incident. But if there is a fatality, if there is a serious injury, we do go back and look at that, again, to see if there's anything more, if there's anything changed that we need to be doing. We also look more broadly at corridors that have more serious injuries, more fatalities, and make sure that we are going back and redesigning those.
Great. Thank you, folks, for answering my questions, and thank you, Chair, for the additional time.
Thank you. And I'm going to go to my round two now, questions. And then if any members have any additional questions, we can revisit. So let's go back to curbside space for a little bit. A 2016 City Commission Congestion Study titled the FHV Transportation Study asserted that traffic congestion is significantly affected by how curb space is managed, noting that when there is adequate space at the curb for trucks and delivery vehicles, and those vehicles double park, they can remove a full lane or more from traffic service, which I see often even in this area where they're double and triple parked in some instances. Has DOT commissioned other similar or more recent studies to assess congestion and how curbside space is managed and utilized?
So I wouldn't say we have a new study of it, but we fully agree with those conclusions that proper management of curbside space is very important for congestion, for safety, for business operations, you know, for bus speeds. A lot of the things we care about really do come back to how well we manage the curb. And it's why we have new ideas like the micro hubs. And I think we're excited to get into doing more active curb management, particularly in the busier parts of the city.
But considering that we haven't really seen any impact from these new initiatives, would you say is a resource issue as to why you're unable to really see a difference in this? Or is there some other reason?
Well, some of the things are just new, so we haven't measured yet. But for example, the Neighborhood Loading Zone program, when the initial wave went out, we did do a lot of measurement and found that double parking really did reduce on the streets. It's not just, we create the loading zones and they filled up with, you know, with people who shouldn't be there. We really found that when you provide the appropriate space, trucks use them, you know, people picking up and dropping off, a person with a disability use them, and they were effective. We had fewer blockages of bike lanes, fewer blockages of bus stops. So that's an example of a program that's now a couple of years old, where we're able to look back. As we do the micro hub pilot, we'll be measuring that in the same way, making sure that it doesn't just work in theory, but that we really do see the changes we want to see on the street. And with every new thing that we do, we will be measuring to make sure that they are effective.
What would you say were some of the recommendation and main takeaways of the study? And how has DOT implemented those recommendations?
I guess I'm not specifically familiar with the study you're talking about. But in general, with curb management, we have been, you know, doing more, you know, more to create loading zones, more to create things around the city that are just better managing our curb. We've expanding metering to encourage turnover in commercial areas. So I think we are doing a lot to try to better manage the curb with more to come.
And I know that 2016 is some time ago, and you probably weren't within the agency. So I'm interested in, like, in terms of continuity when you have these studies, what's happening? And why hasn't it been done since then, right? Are you still going based off of, is the agency still working off of the findings from that 2016 study? Or are you just implementing new initiatives without looking back at what some of the recommendations may have been from this report?
Right. So again, maybe I didn't quite catch the report, but there is actually a lot of continuity in the agency.
It's the 20, it was a study that was commissioned in 2016, and it was called FHV Transportation Study.
Okay, yes. Yes, our policy unit led that. Under, the director of the policy unit is still there. We are familiar, we are, it absolutely still informs what we're doing. The FHV landscape has obviously changed a little bit since then, both with the new rules that TLC has put in, as well as the effects of the pandemic and some of the financial changes within the industry. So I think we continue to use that where it's appropriate, but we also collect new data and update what we're doing where appropriate, too.
But what are some of the main takeaways from the study?
So like, one of the main takeaways from that study was just what a large percentage FHV traffic makes up within midtown. That, you know, we're talking, obviously, with good reason about trucks today. But, you know, there are locations in that study where more than half, or even more than two-thirds of the traffic on the streets were yellow taxis and FHVs. As we think about congestion within, you know, within midtown and some of the closer-in areas in particular, downtown Brooklyn, Long Island City, it's clear that we had to look at some of the issues around taxis and FHVs to address that congestion. Some of that has been done through working with TLC, and they've implemented a number of new rules, particularly around high-volume app services. We've also increasingly looked at creating pickup and drop-off zones for those FHVs, so that where in busy areas, they don't have to sort of block a second lane to do that pickup and drop-off space. We've also been working on taxi relief stands, because we know that driving those vehicles is actually a very difficult business, and trying to provide places where they can legally stop and take a meal or take other types of breaks. And we've been working closely with TLC on implementing those. So I think there are a number of things that we continue to implement while still, you know, recognizing that the landscape has shifted a little bit, particularly in midtown since 2020, and looking at the new data wherever that's appropriate.
Delivery and logistics industry representatives have noted specific challenges they face in the city, including trucks having to block bus and bike lanes while making deliveries, the three-hour time restriction imposed on vehicles in commercial loading zones, vehicles with placards parking in commercial loading zones, and construction activity in and around commercial loading zones. What is DOT doing to ensure that deliveries in the city are more efficient in these spaces? And has DOT studied the effects of the three-hour time restriction in commercial loading zones?
Yes. So it's a really good point, because, you know, again, as Denise said, there are bad apples out there. But we think the vast majority of truck drivers want to do the right thing, but we have to provide space for them to do the right thing. And if you go on a street, if they need to deliver something heavy, they're going to be close to their destination. And if the truck loading zone is blocked, they're going to continue, they're going to park wherever they can. So part of it is, comes through design, and we want to create rules and create street designs that create the right amount of space for this. And then, as we've talked about, the other part of it is enforcement. And when we create clear rules, making sure that other vehicles are not blocking those spaces, you know, and it's not a construction worker with a construction hat in the window, that, and we work very closely with our colleagues here to... the window that, and we work very closely with our colleagues here to, to make sure that those rules are being enforced correctly. And, and we have talked about the three hour limit, you know, part of the goal is to try to encourage turnover, that it's not meant to be a, a space where trucks just can occupy it all day. But, you know, if there's places where three hours really isn't enough, I think we've been open to, to thinking about different rules and different ways to manage our curb space.
And just to add to that, the micro hubs pilot that we referenced, that we're hoping to launch later this summer, will also sort of help to address some of the areas that have high demand. We know that there are particularly areas that have sort of very sort of a high vertical and dense market where they aren't able to serve as many customers. So locating some of these hubs in areas that can help to offset that can also help to address some of those broader issues in terms of dwell time and elements at the curb.
Just touching on congestion pricing for a little bit, how does DOT expect congestion pricing will affect the truck route?
Right, and you know, we obviously, we've been very close partners with the MTA as they've been pursuing their, their environmental review, which we, you know, we all hope will finish soon. So the details of, of the effect on the, on trucks will depend on the plan that's eventually chosen by the, by the MTA and what tolling aspects they choose. Certainly, we're very aware of trying to make sure that anything that's chosen is, has an eye towards reducing the, the effects of, of truck traffic, that, that we're not just pushing it into different neighborhoods, that we are encouraging the, the off hour deliveries the way we do through our program. So I think we're excited to continue working with the MTA on those, those specific details.
How will DOT ensure that, that congestion pricing does not merely just redirect traffic to low income communities and communities of color? Like what, like how are you work, making sure that doesn't happen?
Yes, right, so we're, so we're working very closely with them. Obviously, in the draft environmental assessment in some of the scenarios, there was an increase in, in truck traffic in areas like the South and Central Bronx. And so we both want to work with the MTA on the appropriate tolling scheme to, to make sure that they choose the right scenarios. And then to the extent that it does shift some truck traffic, we want to work with things like the, the Clean Trucks Program that Charles talked about to make sure that anything that can be seen as a negative effect, we really are offsetting with other investments because we think the congestion pricing is a very good thing for the city, but we do need to make sure that it's done correctly so that it's good for everyone and isn't just creating winners and losers.
Thank you. And how does DOT work with like Google Maps and those type of companies to integrate truck routes in certain areas?
Sure. Great question. So we, so our truck route map and network data is available on our website as well as open data for any companies that wish to obtain that and ways to integrate that within their platform. So we make that readily available. Just last year, we worked with Google so that they can use our truck routing data to develop capabilities to integrate that into their platforms. We've not seen sort of the latest of that, but we are actively working on engaging with these routing companies particularly. Generally, we know that commercial grade GPS devices or software are a lot more expensive, particularly for the owner operators than sort of the regular, the broader companies in general. So we see that there's a need to create or promote the use of commercial GPSs for, for routing vehicles.
Do you have reason to believe that these companies are directing trucks off of the truck route at all?
Not necessarily. I think they, they do a good job at putting out their liability disclaimers and, and everything in terms of it is your responsibility to determine, you know, how you use their, their platforms. I think that's something that we can certainly try to find ways to, to learn a little bit more about how that's actually being done, but they aren't really capturing if this person is identifying as a commercial vehicle operator or a truck operator. And that's something I think we can certainly find ways to improve.
I think we should definitely work towards it because I know oftentimes when they get stopped in my community in particular, they often revert back and say, well, this is what the direction is telling me to go.
Yeah, and, and when we see that happening a lot, like it's often comes up with Waze in particular because they, you know, more aggressively route people. We, we, there's a government partnership program with them where when we're seeing a frequent thing, it doesn't mean that an individual might not get routed on a particular day, but if, if everyone is being routed down Second Avenue instead of Third Avenue, then we can go to them and say, you need to take this out of your options list. And, and, you know, I wouldn't say that it's been perfect, but they, they have listened when we've raised frequent issues and, you know, it's, it becomes a little bit of whack a mole, like we wish the companies were more proactive and as Denise said, could push better commercial GPS instead of just people using their phones. But when, when we do see frequent issues, we have contacts with the companies. So if there's places you're seeing it a lot, please let us know and we will help follow up with those companies and try to address it.
Thank you. I wanted to circle back to a question I missed in terms of parking for trucks. What type of planning is DOT doing to ensure that there's adequate amount of parking spaces for trucks? Has DOT applied for the recently announced federal grants to assist with truck parking? So that second part of the question is the part I don't recall hearing answered in terms of the federal grants.
Yeah, so the, the answer to that is, is not yet, but we, as we come up with these more specific plans, we certainly expect, just as we have in many other places, to be applicants for those federal programs.
Off hours delivery program in 2010, in coordinating with partners in the federal government, academia and private industry, DOT piloted off, piloted the off hours delivery program. The program offers financial incentives to businesses that agree to receive deliveries during overnight hours instead of during the business day. When did the off hours delivery program become a permanent program in New York City? What type of financial incentives are offered to the businesses that are a part of this program? How has DOT conducted outreach to businesses to generate interest in the program? And lastly, what type of support does DOT offer to businesses transitioning into the program?
Quite a few questions. We'll try to answer that as succinctly as possible. So yes, you were right in stating that there was a pilot program where we relied on federal funding for the pilot program. The program became permanent in 2019. There was a mayoral press conference about expanding the commitments for off hour deliveries. Currently, we do targeted outreach to vertically integrated chains, folks that may have a little bit easier path in transitioning to the off hours. And we are targeting areas south of Manhattan, south of 59th Street in Manhattan, downtown Brooklyn, more busy areas, different parts of the city. We have leveraged a combination of in-person outreach as well as marketing campaigns. We've been expansive placing ads in advertorial, or advertorials in trade publications to really get at the leaders that can make decisions about making this change because it is a wholesale change for that particular company. So we've leveraged all parts of outreach. We've also leveraged working with the trucking industry to promote this as a critical strategy, particularly for transporters. They see the win-win here in terms of improved efficiency for their operations, but the challenge has often been in working with receivers who oftentimes control when those deliveries get to those particular areas. And then I think there was a last, the last question, can you just repeat that?
What type of support does DOT offer to businesses transitioning into the program?
Great, excellent. So we have dedicated staff that provide sort of technical assistance in helping to make that switch, whether it be a transporter or a business looking to receive deliveries during the off hours and what that may look like. We go through an onboarding process. We oftentimes, particularly for companies that come to us, we may also do matchmaking. So, hey, you're looking to do deliveries during the off hours, this other business might be interested. And then we also help to facilitate that connection to improve efficiency as well and also more outsized impact. We provide guidance, particularly for noise mitigation, to make sure that they are being good neighbors, particularly if they are delivering overnight. And then where possible, we look to provide curb access, which is sort of our, one of our bigger, bigger levers. We are looking at ways to sort of add more incentives to the program and we'd be happy to sort of talk to you in more details about that as we advance.
Thank you. How is DOT implementing federal funding and increased education to improve truck route rule compliance and what type of outreach is done for drivers and businesses?
Sure, so it's, this has generally been a city funded program, but we do have an extensive program really focused on education and outreach.
So we have a multi-pronged approach. We use our truck route maps. We've distributed at least 18,000 or upwards, close to 20,000 maps just within the last year since the new map has been issued. But on average, we, we send out a lot of those maps, either working with our partners at PD, particularly when they are doing the enforcement to make sure that truck drivers are aware of the routes and of the rules. We also work with our partners within the Trucking Association to help to promote and disseminate that information. Our freight webpage is also a great resource, is a one-stop shop, particularly for truck operators. And just in testimony, Eric mentioned our Truck Smart Campaign, which we launched last year. We've produced a truck safety guide for truck operators to make sure that they have all the information about how to operate safely within New York City. That, that guide is available digitally on our website as well as in print. We've also created different languages in three different languages to make sure it's more accessible to other truck drivers that are particularly operating. Certainly, there's room to improve. You know, we have also deployed education outreach teams as part of Division Zero work to make sure that there's increased awareness, particularly when we stop drivers, if it's dusk and, the dusk to dawn campaign or others. We've also leveraged our truck educational, Trucks I View, which is a, a public education campaign, working with communities and bringing more awareness up to vulnerable road users about the larger blind spots associated with trucks. So we are really targeting drivers, but we're also targeting cyclists as well as pedestrians as well. It's really a wide spectrum and I'd be happy to answer any more questions, but there's always room to improve and we're looking at ways to, to do that.
I just want to add that with regard to the, I wanted to point out about rental companies, truck rental companies, sometimes those could be some of the offenders too that go with overhyped vehicles onto parkways or areas that have low clearances. So we, as part of that outreach and education, we also send these outreach materials, here's the truck route map, to the U-Hauls and the Penske and all the other rental companies so they're aware when somebody's renting a truck, like especially at the end of the month when they're going to move from one place to the other, they tell them, here's the rules so that they're aware about it.
Thank you. And have there been any programs to streamline deliveries to big buildings and office complexes?
Not specifically. I think we have several programs at our end, like our off hour deliveries program that looks at sort of the high demand areas that could potentially be, you know, a large building. We see this as sort of our broader approach to, to improve sort of efficiencies for deliveries, whether it be providing a loading zone, et cetera, to help to facilitate better deliveries at that particular establishment. So it's really a, a broad approach that we're like applying with multiple strategies. We have seen opportunities to maybe better develop resources for building owners and property managers to think about how they can improve deliveries for that particular facility. And those are some things that we've highlighted in Delivering New York as recommendations for producing better resources. So that's something that we can certainly continue to elaborate on.
Thank you for that. And what is DOT doing to ensure that it receives the most federal funding that it can, particularly from the infrastructure investment and jobs at?
Sure, we, you know, we are very excited about all the opportunities from the, the bill and the IIJA. We are applying for every single program that we, that is appropriate for us and we've been, I think, actually quite successful.
What types of grants has DOT applied for and one related to trucking and deliveries?
So like, for example, the, the RACE grant where we, that Charles mentioned, where we're looking at the Cross Bronx, the, the attain grant, they, you know, I think there's a lot, we expect to have grant applications as well around some of the new electric vehicle programs that were just announced. So I think there are some of these that are more specifically truck oriented. There are others where trucks are an important component of how we're planning overall. So it's, it's hard to separate out ones that are just truck, but trucks are obviously a very important component of a lot of these other grants that we've applied for and won. I think we've been very successful so far, both writing good grants and working with our, our folks in Washington to help make the case for why our grants are so important. And, you know, certainly our congressional delegation and our senatorial delegation has done great work as well. So we're going to continue every opportunity we can for federal money.
And how does DOT leverage existing partnerships locally, nationally and internationally to improve delivery and logistic systems and adapt new technology?
Thank you for your question. We know that this issue is not unique to New York City or even the US. In fact, there are forums like C40, which is a network of cities that meet together to talk through best practices, share lessons learned, particularly around freight, curb management, et cetera. We are an active partner and, and member of that coalition. We also share best practices with other local cities like Seattle or comparable cities like DC and have regular communications about what strategies have worked and, and how we can also share. I think what's also unique in this space is that New York City has been a leader in implementing and piloting a lot of strategies and finding ways to move forward, particularly in an era that has been long sort of forgotten or an afterthought in planning and transportation. So this is really an opportunity that New York City has taken head, head on.
Just want to touch on some of the legislation that's being considered today also. So for intro 708, would DOT be supportive of implementing daylighting at each intersection adjacent to the truck route network?
Yes, so I mentioned this in testimony, but the, the answer is, is no. We don't think that a blanket policy is appropriate. I think as we designate a new truck route, we would want to look at the truck route as a corridor for, for where treatments like daylighting might be appropriate, but we don't think it makes sense as a, as a requirement for every location.
Would you agree to say that trucks may have limited visibility because of the height and size of the vehicle?
So, so some trucks have, have larger visibility issues and we, that's.
I'm talking about the ones that's carrying most of the freight, the semi, the 18-wheel trucks, like would you agree?
So they often have visibility issues, those visibility issues are not.
Often, or I think it's pretty much factual that they do, which is.
So most of them do. The visibility issues aren't always in front, you know, the visibility issues are also often sort of behind and on either side, which is not something that's necessarily addressed by daylighting.
When you see the crashes that incorporate the trucks, do you find that those accident has been. do you find that those accidents have been caused from the front or sides more so, or the back more so?
So there's, there's a mix, right? There's a type of crash where, you know, if a person, particularly a shorter person, is crossing directly in front of a truck, like right in front, there's a visibility issue there. And we, there's a couple very, very sad times every year when we see that issue. I, I think the larger number do tend to happen when a truck is either turning or sort of changing lanes and it's sort of in that spot that's behind. And, you know, that's a real issue. It's part of why we both...
So turning, which is why we think that daylighting makes sense, right?
So we, I, I would respectfully disagree because we think that daylighting really helps the truck turn at a higher speed. What we want to do on turns is make the turn as tight as possible so that a truck turns very slowly and very obviously. And if we daylight in a way that's, that's not correct, we could end up...
Well, we're not, we're not debating in terms of what type of daylighting. We're just saying to daylight so that there could be increased visibility for the truck when they have to make the turn.
So we, we, I guess, I would say I, I don't think that that type of visibility is what daylighting does. Daylighting helps the visibility when a truck is looking for, or any vehicle is looking forward and a pedestrian is stepping out.
What about...
It does not really help.
What about daylighting with physical infrastructure along with it?
So I, I, I don't think that that addresses the type of crash that you're talking about. We think that that is more valuable than just daylighting with signs only, but it still gets at the, the forward-looking visibility, not as much the, helping address the blind spot of the truck.
Well, we understand that, like, there's not one dynamic that's going to cure all of the issues, but at a very minimum, putting daylighting would be addressing one form of crashes that we're seeing and increase visibility. Has DOT engaged with the Trucking Association to see what their thoughts are in terms of having greater daylighting to provide greater visibility?
I just want to jump in, just, I would think the point Eric is trying to make is that daylighting in some circumstances can make worse the geometries, not, not be neutral. So that's, that's one of the major concerns with the mandate that is requiring for, when we revisit a truck route, that if, if we're mandated to do something, there's the possibility that it would make safety lesser.
And we think daylighting is appropriate. And I don't mean to say that daylighting is not something we would ever want to do. It's, it's the blanket requirement that we have an issue with, that doing it at every single location.
What is the average cost to replace truck route signage along the New York City truck route network?
I don't know if we know, a couple, a couple hundred dollars per location. You know, it's more efficient if you're doing a lot in a series versus having to just send a crew out. The actual sign is probably forty dollars.
And as we're like looking to move Intro 708 forward, can DOT commit to working with the, the sponsor on addressing some of the concerns you may have, but at the same time being able to help us craft the legislation so we're implementing something that could help bring greater safety as it pertains to the trucks and where they are?
Yeah, we're, we're happy to work with you.
Okay, Intro 906. Does DOT take into account tractor trailers and parking areas when designating? And I guess it's kind of hard to say because I haven't really updated it, but the New York City truck route network, or I guess will you take into account?
Yeah, I think that's, that's actually a good question looking forward. Like, we, it is something we should take into account, the recommendations from the task force.
And how are tractor trailers regulated in New York City right now?
So tractor trailers are regulated at every level of government. We have a series of traffic rules in the city that, that apply, particularly as Charles mentioned, around over, over-length trucks. You know, often called fifty-three footers, although it's really end-to-end can't be more than fifty-five feet. There are also important regulations at both the state and federal levels that I think our, our colleagues mentioned. They have specially trained folks who, who know how to enforce those regulations as well. So there's a lot of regulations. There's certain ones that we can control at the city level and we want to use those to the maximum of our ability. But some of it does involve working with state and federal partners as well.
And for Intro 924, has DOT previously studied how street design can be used to deter commercial vehicles from using residential streets?
So we have not come out with what I'd call a published study on it. I don't have a document I can send you to on our website. But it is something that, that we have thought about and are using in many of our street redesigns today, both for trucks and for other through traffic that isn't appropriate. So it's, we do have the tools in our toolbox and places where we see issues, we, we use those. And we're happy to, to work with the sponsor or anyone else on looking at locations of concern.
You're right, because as you're doing Vision Zero and, you know, the, the streets plan, that may be an opportunity, once again, to kind of factor in the truck route as well.
Yep.
And then in your testimony, as you were talking about the citywide freight decarbonization and truck electrification strategy, what's your timeline for that?
Charles?
Yeah, I'm actually going to yield to Didiya Sunda.
Sure, we're looking to wrap that up by early next year. We've done quite a lot of work in terms of engaging with critical stakeholders who are going to be critical to, to helping to decarbonize and sort of the carbon neutrality by 2050, which is part of the, the city's sustainability goals. Right now, the study is focusing on what are the barriers to truck electrification and broader shift to cleaner trucks and cleaner vehicles that are operating on our streets? And how do we address these challenges? What are the levers? What are the incentives that we need to push forward at the city level? And then how do we scale up with the infrastructure to support that shift to cleaner vehicles? So that's the, the broad scope. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
But what's the timeline though?
I said within the next year, so early next year.
Sorry, I missed that part, okay.
That's okay, that's fine.
I also wanted to add that there are programs in place right now that we want to leverage as we go forward. For example, the Clean Trucks Program includes a significant requirement, especially using the supplemental VW settlement money that we got that specifically requires us to spend it on electric vehicle truck procurement and incentives. So there is a way by which we can expedite this process so that it's not just a long-term vision, but we can have some early action implementation.
Okay, and then my two last questions. One, when you were talking about Intro 708, you spoke about the fact that you have your own hearings and public comments. How frequent do you conduct these hearings?
So it, it's really tied to when we're doing any kind of rule change, which, you know, our truck routes are in our rules, so those are a rule change. But so, you know, when we're changing the loading regulations, any of these are a rule change. So it's a, it, within that, within that law, there's specific timelines for when you publish public notice, when you have to have the public hearing, and how those are conducted. So the, the number and frequency are variable based on how many rules we're adjusting in a year. But it's, it's a required part of the process. As I've said, we're, we're happy to look at, think what we can do above and beyond that, but there are just certain, certain things that we have to do and certain things that we can't do in close proximity to, to those hearings. So we just need to be thoughtful about the requirements so that we're not tying ourselves in a knot.
Okay, I'm going to kick it over to Councilmember Avila's for more questions.
Thank you. Thank you. I wanted to touch base on a couple of different things. In terms of the Clean Truck Program, can you tell me exactly how the, the total funding allocation for this program? What has been utilized to date? And has it reached more than just, I guess, the area of the Bronx?
Right, with regard to the Clean Trucks Program, we have spent, actually it's funded at about thirty million dollars thus far. We have done about, up to 2015, we did up to five hundred trucks. Well, that includes basically retrofits as well as new truck replacements. And then in some cases, we're just purchases of battery electric vehicle programs. As of this year, I think we had about six hundred trucks so far. In terms of the starting location, as I mentioned before, it started in the South Bronx. But in 2020, when we got the VW monies, we extended it to, it's a citywide initiative to all industrial business zones. And the funny, the, I'm saying, the benefit there was really, these are industrial business zones are also adjacent to environmental justice communities.
One hundred percent, yeah.
This was a big benefit for us.
So what, what, the thirty million dollars is the total amount of the program? What has been expended to date?
I think I, I can get back to you with regard to the exact numbers.
Okay, and I'd love to know a breakdown if in my, I have one of the largest industrial manufacturing zones, how much of our industrial manufacturing partners have taken advantage of that? In fact, I know Red Hook Container Terminal has another port elsewhere in New Jersey. And with the support of federal funding, they transitioned their entire fleet. But it has not been able to do that in New York City because they have not been able to access additional subsidy support.
Understood, that's a good, a good point. Well, one of your resident businesses, Manhattan Beer, is one of our big clients that has actually taken significant advantage of this.
Okay, well, we want to encourage our entire industrial manufacturing fleet
Absolutely.
to go green without question. So I'd love to follow up.
But also, just as a point of information, just remember also that sometimes there's a constraint about the replacement cycle of trucks. You know, trucks, they have twelve-year service life. If you just purchase your trucks and then we require you to give back this truck so as to take it off the roadway and it's a heavier polluting, you have to assess the benefit of costs. And that's what we do with you to figure out what the best replacement that you can do and what's your cycle for doing that.
Great. In terms of the neighborhood, commercial truck, interesting corridor we have is our Eighth Avenue Corridor in Sunset Park. Very, very challenging corridor. We saw the, the placement of quite a number of truck loading and unloading zones. And I can tell you, I have never been on Eighth Avenue and have observed one truck actually using the truck loading and unloading zones because they're normally just cars sitting there all day long, all night long. No one observes the truck loading and unloading zones. One of the most congested corridors in New York City and probably very, very unsafe for, for many of our residents. Can you tell me a little bit about, have you gone back to see the effectiveness of hanging up all these signs on Eighth Avenue? And, and how does the city, how is it going to continue to implement and monitor that?
Yeah, no, I mean, Eighth Avenue is a place we've looked at quite a bit over the years. And, you know, I, I think the truck loading zones, we agree, are, are not providing all of the, the needs of that corridor. You know, we, as you may know, in late in the last administration, there was a proposal to do a more aggressive treatment that was, you know, just got a challenging reception locally. I, I think we still feel like on Eighth Avenue as well as Seventh Avenue, there are real concerns about safety, about bus speeds, about commercial access. And, you know, I think we, we welcome working together on how to revisit those corridors.
Yeah, or, or how DOT coordinates with PD around how those corridors are engaged, right? Those, that specific truck loading and unloading. If, if there's never anyone doing enforcement, ever, it doesn't change anything. And we haven't seen any enforcement there at all, no change of behavior. So I guess I'd like to, to know, like, in those instances, right? We understand there's like a culture of practice that's not great here. How, how, what, what is a proactive plan that the agency takes when it is trying to kind of shift a culture of practice in a corridor that is problematic? Do you just let it be and nobody pays attention? Or is there some kind of strategy that you attempt to implement?
I, I would say that that corridor is particularly problematic in part because of how the last administration left things. You know, I, I think in general, we, we try not to just say we're going to enforce our way out. Like, you know, I'm sure if I asked my colleagues to go, they could be there much, much more. But, you know, what we typically like to do is work with the bid, work with, you know, the, the local community to try to get good information out and, and, you know, try to have it be education as much as it is enforcement. I think there's still some bad feelings there that are not totally resolved and has made that interaction more challenging.
Yeah, if you, if you know me, you know enforcement is not the first approach I would like to take. But we see no presence at all. In fact, no even engagement around the fact that, you know, this is a new treatment, right? There's none, no engagement at all from any agency on that corridor. So I hear you about the last administration, but I think it begs the question of if we are going to implement a change, right? An allocate agency resource, and we know this is an important one, albeit controversial, there has to be consistent engagement for residents, both to understand the meaning of the treatment and for, to change behavior. But putting up signs and then walking away is not acceptable. And in fact, just actually does the opposite. It has a deleterious effect on residents who feel like, well, you know, city doesn't care. They just hang up a sign and it doesn't, nothing, nothing matters. So we have to continue, we'd love to continue the conversation because we're starting to see this behavior happen in many other commercial corridors in our district. It's the same kind of like benign neglect.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, absolutely. But, but, but let's talk more about it. Because I, I think both making sure that what we have out there works and seeing if there's even more we can do for safety would be really appropriate there.
And in the, just a bit of a meta-question in terms of truck redesign, I mean, how, how does the agency incorporate environmental impacts around how it is looking at redesign or, or even allowing? So for instance, I've said this to you a number of times, Van Buren Street is, is one of the two streets' truck routes. It was, it has received no infrastructure upgrades, yet the city has allowed six last-mile facilities in the process of being developed, which will introduce thousands of trucks. This street has no treatment and will have no treatment despite it already crumbling infrastructure. How does the city proactively look at an environmental justice community and environmental justice criteria before it allows the proliferation of these kinds of facilities and impacts?
Yes, so I mean, I, I can't speak to the, the land use issues. Obviously, we have, we have colleagues in the city that are better suited to that. But I, I think what is true is we've seen that there's been a real change in Red Hook. You know, we, we had done a number of studies of Red Hook in the past and, and, and there were changes. You know, there's new traffic signals along Van Prun Street that were not there previously. But those were all before sort of the, these new land use changes came about. And I think that's why we think it's very appropriate that we're refocused on the, on taking a fresh look at the transportation issues around Red Hook. And, you know, without, we're still at the beginning of the study, but it's a little hard to imagine that we'll get through it and say nothing at all about Van Prun Street.
Yeah, no, the frustration is the post, right? It's always the post-mortem, what we could have changed after we introduced multiple facilities and, and allowed the use of a corridor that is wholly incapable of sustaining what we are allowing to proliferate, right? That's the frustration of the community. And, and the fact that they have been sounding the alarms on this and it takes us ten years to actually finally get to a place of agreement to implement the study in the context has changed and become significantly worse. So, so I guess I, just as a point of comment, would love to really see how and understand how the agency is more proactive and inter-coordinating with other agencies when they understand something is happening in an environmental justice community that it, it, it have clear thresholds and understanding around. We know this community cannot suffer fifteen more thousand trucks a day. And yet, you know, it's like turn a blind eye. So like to proactively engage and look at comprehensively how we become a safer and better city and how communities who have been historically neglected are looked at first and foremost in impact. So just broad points.
Yeah, well, well, point well taken.
Okay, we're now going to move to public testimony. I ask that you, NYPD and DOT leave someone behind in case we need to ask any additional questions on this side and also hear from the public.
Yep, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to public testimony. Each panelist will be given two minutes to speak. For panelists testifying in person, please come to the dais as your name is called and wait for your turn to speak. And for panelists who are testifying remotely, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you and the sergeant at arms will give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. I would like to now welcome Gloria Boyce Charles, Sarah Al Bakri, Kevin Garcia, and Zach Miller to testify. You may begin when ready. You may begin.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Gloria Boyce Charles. I'm from the Brookville community in southeast Queens. We are just next to, adjacent to the JFK International Airport. I want to thank the council member, Silvina Brooks-Powers, for chairing this important committee and for supporting the legislation on this important matter. I, I, I must say that I think that it's always a good thing to revisit and redesign something that hasn't been looked at for a long time, such as our truck routes, given the changes and projections regarding truck traffic. But I, I have to say that I, I, I've been listening all afternoon and, and I'm, I'm a little confused about some of the things I'm hearing. A lot of what's going on in our community is not necessarily a matter of how trucks are, are routed. It's a matter of how trucks are being monitored and how enforcement is taking place. Per section 385 of the DOT Vehicle and Traffic Law, it says that a 53-foot tra, uh, trailer is allowed only limited travel through New York City to reach destinations on Long Island using the following routes. And it talks about I-95, it talks about I-295, it talks about I-495. And we seem to be suggesting that one of the biggest problems that we have with trucking activity, trucks going up and down our streets and parking on our streets, is that they're not managed. The biggest problem is they're not supposed to be there. They are not supposed to be in our communities in the first place. And, and I didn't hear anybody acknowledge that today, and that, that's very concerning. It makes me wonder if in redesigning the truck routes, there is going to be an effort to normalize their activity on our streets and just ignore the fact that there's a rule on the books that says they're not supposed to be there at all. Now, when you hear from Ms. Barbara Brown from the Eastern Queens Alliance, she'll reinforce that. That's, that's something she, you know, she found because in our communities, we've been complaining for a long time. And we were always told that, you know, the trucks have a right to come up and down your streets if they're trying to get to a warehouse that they need to be at. But the fact of the matter is 53-foot trucks, foot trucks don't have that right. It says right here that 53-foot-long trailers are not allowed to make pickups or deliveries in any of the boroughs of New York City. So I'm very concerned about the attempt to normalize that activity this afternoon. Maybe I'm not understanding something. Now, there were other things that were said today, and if you'll allow me another couple of minutes, I, I just want to, I just want to share a few thoughts.
So if you could just do it in another minute, but Ms. Boyce Charles, you could also submit your testimony as well.
Yes, I, I'm going to actually go out and revise my, my, my testimony based on what I heard today. But I'm, I'm very happy that, you know, there's going to be some ground truthing on the part of DOT as they prepare their report and do the redesign. I, I hope that that ground truthing is done in a robust manner. I hope that they will come into our communities not just to send somebody to look at a couple of areas and, you know, click a button and say how many trucks are moving about and what sizes they are, not just by having some public hearings that 50 people show up to. But I hope that they will actually send people who are going to be writing these reports into our communities to walk up and down our streets, to talk to our people and to see the, the, the disruption of these 53-foot tractor-trailer trucks in our communities. They should see how people who have homes are, are being imposed upon by truck repair shops and trucking warehouses just on the other side of the street. They should, they should see how a, a, one of our residents has a big white fence with tire tracks in it from 53-foot truck, tractor-trailer trucks trying to, um, driving into her fence in an effort to park their trail, their tractor-trailer into a garage bay that, that really is not suited for a, a truck that large. They should see how cars are being sideswiped and how streets are being put into disrepair. And, you, you know, the general disruption, how people's homes are being compromised, cracks in our, cracks in our ceilings, et cetera, based on all of this activity. And they should take a look at the research that's been suggested here today that points to the chronic illness in our communities and the high rate of low birth weight and premature death that, that, that results from breathing in polluted air that they contribute to. They should come and they should see. And when they do that, I hope that that will inform their report and the way they route the trucks. I have more to say, but I will stop here.
Thank you.
I will submit it in my testimony, and I thank you so much for indulging me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sarah Al Bakri. I'm the Community Resilience Coordinator of Uprose. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony today on behalf of Sunset Park and the Environmental and Climate Justice Communities and Advocates in support of legislation INTRO 708 and 924. Uprose is Brooklyn's oldest Latino community-based organization where Black, Indigenous women of color lead, intergenerational grassroots, and working at the intersection of racial justice and climate change in Sunset Park, Brooklyn, and beyond. Sunset Park is an environmental justice community that has endured a legacy of toxic exposure and been the reluctant host to a myriad of discriminatorily cited environmental burdens. Uprose is part of a citywide coalition, the Last Mile Coalition, which advocates to regulate last-mile trucking facilities in New York City and reduce the extreme truck, trucking issue in the city. The explosive and unchecked growth of the e-commerce industry and last-mile warehouses in New York City is an environmental justice issue, and these facilities are not regular warehouses, they're mega in size and bring many negative impacts to the environment, health, the local economy, safety, and traffic of stranded communities. These facilities exacerbate truck traffic that is already very high in the city and bringing them to residential areas with narrow streets that weren't designed for these uses, worsening air pollution and asthma rates that are already extremely high, health concerns, increasing congestion, and pedestrian safety issues. And these last-mile warehouses continue to be cited and built in low-income, working-class communities of color like Sunset Park with no notice or environmental review or community engagement processes. There are at least two new mega warehouses coming to Sunset Park and leaving this issue unregulated and community health unprotected is unacceptable. So as an environmental justice community, Sunset Park already deals with the cumulative impacts of other polluting infrastructures such as the Gowanus Expressway and BQE. And today, we continue to fight for clean air, safe and healthy neighborhoods for Black and Brown people that have been historically overburned and neglected by extractive unsustainable practices that value profit over people. So the legislation proposed by Councilmember Aviles that's up for hearing today is imperative to protect the human rights of communities like Sunset Park by redesigning New York City's truck routes, to start improving safety of our streets, reduce traffic, reduce congestion, and reduce emissions. And we believe this legislation will help start addressing these negative impacts of e-commerce facilities, last-mile warehouses, and working-class communities of color. And as climate and racial justice advocates, Uprose urges City Council to do right by the most vulnerable and pass this legislation which prioritizes community health and justice. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time, for your time to speak today. My name is Kevin Garcia, and I'm the Transportation Planner with the New York City Environmental Justice Alliance. Nija is a nonprofit citywide membership network linking grassroots organizations from low-income neighborhoods and communities of color in the struggle for environmental justice. Nija is also a part of the Last Mile Coalition, a citywide coalition of environmental justice and public health advocates fighting to regulate last-mile trucking facilities in New York City. I'm here to express Nija's support of INTRO 708 and INTRO 924. In the last decade, the e-commerce market has exponentially grown and the demand for online goods has risen. Because goods in New York City are transported primarily by trucks, last-mile warehouses tend to be cited by highways and can only be cited in manufacturing and C-8 districts. In New York City, to meet the demand for next-day and same-day delivery, there has been an unregulated growth of last-mile warehouses that have been cited in environmental justice communities. The size of these facilities, coupled with the demand of online goods, has led to an increase in the number of vans and trucks needed to deliver goods to last-mile warehouses and to complete the trip to their final destination. This increase in traffic has led to an increase in tailpipe emissions, noise pollution, and public safety concerns in environmental justice communities. While passenger vehicles make up the majority of the tailpipe emissions in New York City, heavy-duty vehicles make up 6% of the vehicle activity but contribute 52% of on-road vehicle tailpipe PM 2.5 emissions and 51% of on-road vehicle NOx emissions in New York City. A 2016 DOH, New York City DOH study estimated that PM 2.5 pollution from traffic sources contributed to 320 premature deaths and 870 emergency department visits and hospitalizations every year. The same agency found that the hospitalizations for preventable asthma occurred disproportionately in the poorest neighborhoods at a rate of up to 30 times more frequent than in the wealthiest communities. Trucks carry most freight in New York City and are expected to remain the predominant mode past 2045 on an already constrained transportation network. Thus, we strongly urge the City Council to move forward with INTRO 708 and INTRO 924 to protect our communities by redesigning the city's truck routes and streets to reduce traffic in our communities and reduce pedestrian safety concerns and improve air quality. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Brooks-Powers and members of the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. My name is Zach Miller. I am the Metro Region Operations Manager for the Trucking Association of New York. The safe and efficient movement of goods and services are vital to the economic vitality and growth of commerce in New York City and the greater metropolitan region. Trucks move goods and freight to grocery stores, markets, and restaurants, manufacturing facilities, office buildings, construction sites, and residences. Trucks come in many shapes and sizes. The nature of a community's local business and industries dictate the truck traffic, which DOT uses to determine whether a truck route is needed to facilitate freight movement. The truck route network is a key safety tool, and we must ensure trucks stay en route. That is why we are supportive of INTRO 708, which would require DOT to redesign the city's truck route network in consultation with city agencies, affected residents, and representatives from business, environmental, and climate justice organizations, street safety organizations, industrial business zone administrators, and the trucking logistics and last-mile delivery industries. Freight mob, DOT's freight, officer freight mobility, as part of their best, best practices, engages with the various stakeholders and agencies that are highlighted in the bill and does so consistently. This has greatly improved freight efficiency and served the city especially well during the worst of the pandemic. We agree that it is wise to codify these best practices into law. With about 1,300 miles of designated roadways, NYC has one of the most complex truck route systems in the nation. We credit DOT with their redesigned truck route network outreach and map distribution as part of their delivery in New York a smart truck management plan for New York City. It's crucial that this network be closely monitored and improved, and we are delighted to see the Council support DOT's efforts to do this. The best way to ensure safe and efficient truck route network is not to reduce the options for truck drivers to take but to provide them with the tools they need, such as overnight truck parking, neighborhood loading zones, curbside access, well-maintained roads, and stronger signage in and around the 21 IBZs throughout the city. It is also in the best interest of all New Yorkers that we keep the truck route network and bike lane network separate as much as possible. Too often, we have seen bike lanes placed right in front of freight terminals, which creates the potential for unnecessary conflict. We also must give credit to civic groups such as the Queens Community Task Force for solutions to illegal truck parking. In their quest to solve the overnight truck parking shortage seeks to ensure that traffic flows and delivery patterns are factored in to provide both clear access to truck drivers and safe streets for communities. We appreciate both the City Council and Adams Administration's dedication to solving the overnight truck parking shortage and are supportive of INTRO 906. This common sense legislation will ensure our hard-working truck drivers will have a safe place to park and our communities will have safer, cleaner streets. Not only that, but it will help to facilitate even greater sustainable and efficient initiatives such as off-hour deliveries, microhub distribution centers, and electronic, electric vehicle charging hubs, all of which need infrastructure to succeed and are a major goal for both DOT and TANY. As always, the Trucking Association of New York looks forward to ongoing collaboration and dialogue with the City Council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well done on the speed reading.
It reminds me I need to get glasses, unfortunately.
I have the same, I share the same issue. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Can you tell us, you heard the engagement around daylighting and the city's resistance to having a blanket policy? Can you talk to us about it?
Yeah, and I'll be honest, that was the, the paragraph I kind of skipped through here. But we are, I'm just going to read it. Lastly, we are happy to see an emphasis placed on daylighting at intersections adjacent to the truck route network. In providing information from fleets to open plans as part of their upcoming curb report, we learned how frustrated many fleets are by curb parking at intersections, with some asking us to request the city to remove such parking. This is yet another tool that DOT can utilize to make our streets safer and to increase efficiency throughout the truck route network. So, so, yeah, I mean, we, again, I, I would, engineering questions, you know, we would defer to, to DOT and urban planners, but there is that frustration, especially with some of the larger trucks that deliver to job sites, construction sites, that the, the cars parked right there makes it really difficult for them to turn. And I respect the concern regarding speed. We want, you know, vehicles, especially larger vehicles, to move as slowly as possible, but they kind of do by nature. I mean, the trucks we're talking about are not going to take wide, fast turns at these intersections. It's almost impossible for them to do that. Smaller vehicles, the box trucks, the cargo vans, you know, again, I would defer to DOT. Perhaps it's what they're referring to. But in terms of the, the space to turn, yeah, many of our, our members flag that for us as, as they'd love to see some more daylighting at these intersections.
No, thank you. That's the experience that we see in the community every single day, and I have never seen a large truck speed through a turn. There's just, it's impossible to do that, given the conditions on New York City streets. So, thank you, thank you for that. I'd like to hear from the other members of the panel in terms of what would you like to concretely see or offer in terms of solutions the city should truly look at moving forward in this context? Additional recommendations?
Well, if I may, I would like to see more regulation around actually 50- smaller conveyances should be coming into our community. I think that there should be regulation around how many trucks can go up and down any given street at any point in time. And I really think that there needs to be more, it needs to be built into the report and the rerouting strategy. The whole issue of how we're monitoring, measuring, evaluating, enforcing, and holding people at the agency level accountable, who's held accountable to address our issues? A lot of times when we have issues and we go to DOT, they say, oh, well, that's, we're only monitoring. It's an NYPD issue. You go to NYPD and, well, they can't help you because they don't have enough boots. And then when they get enough boots, they don't have enough places to tow the trucks to. And so there's so many agencies engaged and so much of passing the buck. And so there's a lack of accountability and transparency. If all of these, all this monitoring is taking place that I heard today, where is that made available to the general public? You know, transparency about who's owning these warehouses in our community? And how can we, as community members, reach out to these people to let them know how we feel about the way they're doing business in our communities? And it's not just trucking warehouses that are 500,000 feet or more. I live in a community where a warehouse is embedded. I don't know how many square feet that warehouse is. I know that it supports the air cargo traffic for, the air cargo for the JFK Airport, but, you know, that needs to be consulted with too and managed too. So, you know, I'd like to see a lot more of that kind of coordination and attention to detail in our communities. Don't get me started.
Thank you so much for your testimonies.
Oh, yeah, I was going to add, so in terms of what we'd like to see, definitely less trucks overall. And we think that this could be achieved by transitioning more towards using the waterfront and using more maritime, rail, and clean transport. And specifically, what we've been hearing from community members is they want to see more enforcement of overweight trucks that are contributing to the crumbling neighborhood infrastructure, you know, that weren't designed for these huge trucks to come through on a daily basis. And then also more monitoring and comprehensive proactive planning. So I think the legislation that we're here to support today is a really great step in the right direction to update the truck routes that haven't been since the 1970s.
And if I may, yeah, I think we would like to see more low-traffic neighborhoods, more daylighting, and other speed reduction measures. But as mentioned by the other panelists, enforcement is key, right? We can redesign our truck routes, we can redesign our streets, but the enforcement of these, you know, rules is also important. We'd love to see more micro-distribution hubs. I know we're talking about the Department of Transportation, but, you know, our coalition has submitted a zoning text amendment, which would define and create a special permit process for these last mile warehouses, which are, you know, demanding hundreds, thousands of more trucks to these facilities to make these deliveries to the facility and to the destination, and our infrastructure just cannot take it. Thank you.
That's right. Thank you, because I think what we're also seeing is these facilities are being built afright, totally evading any evaluation of environmental impacts in communities. And so something has got to change here. It is unacceptable for corporations to come in and build and not have any accountability or responsibility for the impacts of their business on our community residents. Thank you for that work.
Thank you so much. We'll now move to Lacey Taber from the Office of the Brooklyn Borough President.
Starting time.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Good morning, Chair Brooks Powers and members of the committee. Thank you for holding this hearing today. As you may know, environmental justice and reducing truck traffic in environmental justice communities has been a major priority of the Brooklyn Borough President since he started his career. And so wanted to be here today to express support for passing Intro 708 and 924. In addition to just talk a little bit about, you know, some recent successes we've had, including, you know, waste equity, commercial waste signings, but we really need to build on this victory. And the next front, as you've heard, is really going to be regulating other types of trucks, especially due to the rise of e-commerce. In the last three years, the largest percentage of 301 complaints about ending air quality and truck activity have come from Brooklyn's waterfront communities that also border the BQE, with the largest uptick coming from neighborhoods where last mile facilities have sprung up in industrial zones. And we're working proactively on legislation about this, but in the meantime, really want to express support for the micro hubs, non-truck types of delivery methods, expanding cargo bike delivery programs, state legislation to legalize the larger bikes. That can go further and hold more. We really want to see these bills passed. We want to see creative design interventions. We want to make sure that the planning includes diverse stakeholders from within the industry and those who are impacted by it. And we want to encourage the Council to hear Intro 721, which is explore how to integrate truck routes with GPS so that drivers can plan their routes more efficiently. And finally, I will just say, we're very excited about the expansion of the loading zone program, off-hour deliveries. As I mentioned, implementation of commercial waste zones is going to be huge here.
Time expired.
Enforcement, especially of oversized trucks. Thank you so much. I submitted written testimony that goes into more detail.
Thank you. We'll hear next from Barbara Brown.
Starting time.
I want to thank Councilmember Delina Brooks Powers for holding this hearing. I'm going to send in testimony, so right now, I'm going to react to some of the things that I've heard today. We're mainly concerned about the air cargo industry and how it's impacting our communities in Southeast Queens. And as Ms. Charles said earlier, the illegal truck parking, illegal truck parking is a problem, but it's really a byproduct of a lack of enforcement of the 53-foot rule in our area. Since 2015, when the Port Authority was given permission to receive goods from air cargo through the Van Wyk Expressway, the problems have increased exponentially. And when we have asked the Port Authority about making sure that those 53 footers go back out over the Van Wyk or that they follow the rules, their attitude has been that that's not their problem. Enforcement of where the trucks go after they leave the airport is somebody else's problem. It's NYPD, it's DOT, but it's not, it's not their problem. So the law regarding 53 footers definitely needs to be enforced. They're not supposed to be on city streets, and they only are supposed to be, if they are given permission to deliver to a local entity, it's supposed to be because they are carrying an indivisible load, which in probably 90% of the time, that's not an issue. The, it was mentioned that marine freight is being considered by the DOT, and I think that that's a great idea. And my question is, have you considered, has the DOT considered integrating the air cargo or JFK into that marine freight ruling or provision, since they're right there on Jamaica Bay? We are in support of all of the rules that are being discussed today. The daylighting, we are a little bit concerned about in terms of impact on residential communities, so I like some of the suggestions that I heard about earlier. We need to, in terms of those, that whole intro, we need to make sure that all of the civic associations and community boards that are going to be impacted are really included in the discussion. And quite frankly, it talks about the Port Authority and EDC it didn't mention, but those are part of the problem because they're not enforcing the rules and EDC holds, has the ability to decide how some of the land is used around JFK and more, they keep bringing in more and more air cargo. So they're taking a bad situation and making it worse. And the supply chain delay problems are also an issue. Just, I'm skimming through, the parking lots that Intro 906 speaks of should not, we want to make sure that those parking lots are not right across the street from people's homes or our parks. So that needs to, those choices about where need to be carefully looked at. And unless the Port Authority opens up some of its excess land to parking of trucks, there probably needs to be more than one parking lot in the air cargo industry area. So those are just some main things, the use of traffic cameras. I'm glad to see that that is there. And I put a question here, will that include issuing of tickets and fines and all the rest of the things that they do to the general public? But we have been talking about why trucks are not being monitored by traffic cameras. I will be submitting a more detailed testimony and changing some of it in light of things that I heard today, but thank you.
Thank you so much. And just a point of clarification, what year did you say that the Port Authority received that approval?
Ms. Brown, are you still there?
Please unmute her.
Kevin, can you please unmute?
Oh, yeah, I didn't realize I was remuted. Yeah, 2015.
2015. And who gave the approval?
It's my understanding was the city. It was something that went before City Council. They petitioned the city to allow the 53 footers to come into the airport through the Van Wyk Expressway, because up until that point, they weren't allowed in the city at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear next from Eric McClure.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, Chair Brooks Powers, Councilmember Williams, Committee Council. My name is Eric McClure. I'm the Executive Director of Streets PAC. Commerce in New York City is heavily reliant on trucking, with about 90% of the goods transported enter through the city carried by trucks. And while truck trips have boomed over the past few years driven by New Yorkers' thirst for e-commerce and home delivery, that number is yet expected to increase by 2/3 over the next 20 years. So we're faced with a quandary. While we certainly need to shift significant amounts of large-scale shipments to waterborne and rail freight, and a big portion of last mile deliveries to e-bikes and other smaller, more nimble vehicles, it's clear that truck deliveries and lots of them aren't going away. That underscores why it's necessary to optimize the city's truck routes and why we support Intro 708, which requires redesign of New York City's truck route network to improve safety, increase visibility, and reduce congestion and emissions and vehicle miles traveled. We don't expect that a truck route redesign will radically change the existing route map, but with the rapid proliferation of last mile delivery facilities, updates are almost certainly needed. And we strongly support the provision in the bill that would require visibility improvements at intersections along truck routes. A significant share of fatal pedestrian and cyclist crashes in New York City occur at intersections. Taking steps to improve visibility is common sense while also taking into account the Department of Transportation's concerns that such setups not enable faster turns. We also need to get better and smarter at enforcing truck route regulations. With advances in navigation technology, no truck should be off-road except when using the most direct last mile path to a delivery or pickup. And we should explore using GPS tracking to enforce violations. We also need to adopt a zero-tolerance approach to 53-foot trailers with fines great enough to keep them off city streets, period. In addition, we must continue to move aggressively toward off-hour deliveries, consolidation of local deliveries, and expanded use of micro hubs and dedicated commercial and residential delivery space at the curb. Councilmembers, a supermajority of whom are sponsors of Intro 708, need to be prepared to support recommended truck route changes with the knowledge that no constituent is going to embrace having trucks on their block and that car owners will likely oppose removal of parking spaces to increase visibility. Improving truck logistics for everyone will require some shared sacrifice, and it's vital to bettering quality of life across New York City. Let me in closing just say that Councilmember Aviles and I, I serve as Chair of Brooklyn Community Board Six, share the Red Hook neighborhood and our catchment areas, and Red Hook's been overrun by last mile delivery facilities. Certainly, the truck routes in and out of Red Hook need to be looked at very closely and updated where necessary, and the city as a whole needs to take a really aggressive approach toward limiting the proliferation of last mile facilities, especially in neighborhoods like Red Hook that are environmental justice communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear now from Joseph Fama.
Starting time.
Thank you very much for this opportunity, Chairwoman Brooks Powers. I appreciate it, and I just wanted to let you know that we support Intro 708 and the other bills as well. My credentials, of course, I'm a former DOT Assistant Commissioner in the City of New York, and for the last 30 years have been the CEO of Empire Commercial Services, which represents about 200 trucking companies here in the city, everybody from DHL to Poland Spring to Dunkin' Donuts and a host of others. They also support 708, primarily because of the daylighting provision. They all believe, and we believe, it's very important to move ahead with the daylighting. We tend to look at it sometimes not circumspectly. We, I heard discussion today from DOT about, you know, visibility of the truck drivers. We also see there's a problem with visibility for the pedestrians and the bicyclists. Because when you have a large vehicle parked within that 25 feet of the corner, the pedestrian can't see what's coming around the corner. It's not just what can the driver see, but the pedestrian and the bicyclist. So we believe having those corners clear will make it easier for the driver, easier and safer for the pedestrian. There is a weakness, though, in this program, and that is that if there are vehicles, especially large vehicles, parked in that space, and they are members of the stipulated fine program, that parking violation automatically gets a reduction for the commercial operator. So we believe that that program needs to be reviewed, that the no standing violation should not receive any reduction. And further, a lot of the complaints today were about the residential streets having overnight or late-night parking of commercial vehicles. That's a Code 78 violation, which also gets an automatic reduction. So whether the DOT is going to determine the daylighting, or the Council's going to exercise its powers and take control of that, we take the teeth out of it if we're going to give away reductions for violating those parking rules anyway. So our suggestion is we remove the reduction for all the no standing violations under Code 78 violations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Powers.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Christian Fama.
Starting time.
Hello, Christian Fama from Empire Commercial Services. Thank you, Councilmembers, for having us. I'm a little disappointed that there's not more people in the room to hear this, but spot-on, I heard a lot about enforcement. And I'm going to try to be as concise as I can, but the daylighting provision in 708 is by far the most important provision in terms of safety for not only the truck drivers but the pedestrian. of safety for not only the truck drivers, but pedestrians and the cyclists as well. DOT testified 260 fatalities this year, but then, you know, also said the daylighting wasn't an issue in terms of safety. So it was a little bit of a contradiction. We have an amendment proposed to 708 to eliminate reductions for no-standing violations issued to commercial vehicles that are parked in the daylighting zone, because again, it's a bit of, you know, a contradiction where you're gonna try to enforce, 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 but then give automatic reductions for the violations you're trying to enforce upon. I'll touch quickly on the commercial loading zones, same deal. The commercial loading zones get currently 100% reduction. So what you have now is vehicles warehousing themselves in the commercial loading zones, which is why they're not empty. So I think there needs to be a hard look at stipulated fine and the reductions being given in that program that are undermining and undercutting some of the proposed City Council legislation and things the City Council is trying to do. And it's really gonna take the teeth out of the whole daylighting if these companies are receiving an automatic 20%, 25% reduction on their violation, on top of all the safety issues, obviously. The last thing I'll leave you with, same thing for the commercial overnight parking. There's been a solid complaint from everybody that's been here. That ticket receives a 40% reduction in the stipulated fine program. So again,
Time expired.
Disincentivize the companies from parking the vehicles overnight, should probably start with stop giving them a 40% automatic reduction on every single ticket they get in stipulated fine program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll hear next from Nicole Epstein-Schwarz.
Starting time.
Hi, this is Oliver Graham. I'm not actually scheduled to speak on this. I work with Nicole. We're just attending the Zoom, just as a spectator here.
Sorry, can you
Terribly sorry for
Can you restate your name? Oh, you're not, you're not testifying?
We're not testifying, sorry. Yeah, we're just, we're just spectating here.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm sorry for any confusion.
We will next hear from IG Donterius and Alex Stein.
Yeah, he's to show what's going on in this city, so you guys have to respect him. All right, guys, my name, my name is
Excuse me, I asked that you please put on your shirt.
Wait, why?
I just asked that you please put on a shirt.
Is there a dress code?
I just asked that he could put on his shirt, please.
All right, you gotta cover up your nipples. I don't know, it's just weird. So everybody else can be naked in the city, but outside, you go outside this city, there's a bunch of naked homeless people here. And we're talking about transportation. I'm here with my wife's boyfriend. It's just ridiculous that you, you guys are gonna persecute him because he's a black man. That's why you guys are doing this? This is why you're bringing so much attention to him? When we walked in here, it was absolutely unreal, the amount of security that he went through compared to the amount of security that I went through. And this is my wife's boyfriend. I mean, the things that he does to my wife is incredible, and we're talking about transportation? Let's talk about Pete Buttigieg, the Transportation Secretary. And he's the best secretary I've ever had because he's a homosexual, and as a matter of fact, that's why I started to become bisexual, to be more like Pete Buttigieg. And that's why I've started to have a relationship with men on the side, and that's why I have grinders. So, listen, we need to get federal funding. Selvina, is that how you say your name, Selvina Brooks Powers? We got to get some federal funding from Pete Buttigieg, because, listen, Joe Biden's over there, I know his son's smoking crack in the Ukraine, but that doesn't matter. I mean, Pete Buttigieg, you know, I know he's like on a gay cruise with his husband and they're, you know, like breastfeeding their babies and stuff, but they can help the transportation issues we're having here in New York. I mean, that's the federal boss, dog. I'm Primetime99, I'm a pimp on a blimp, so I wrote this song. New York City is so dang bad. This apple is rotten. What have we gotten? Nothing but violence. All I hear is silence from our leaders. My man's titties are out and they are bleeders, because they get cut with a knife. He sleeps with my wife. This city is damn too expensive to get an apartment. We need to lower the rent, but instead, we're going to charge these poor drivers more money. But all I wanna do is get vaccinated, stick that vaccine in my arm. I wanna vaccinate with this love charm. I love you guys. I'm Primetime99, Selvina, and my wife's boyfriend has a lot of issues, and, you know, I just hate these trucks when they're trying to take a nap and I'm playing Xbox and they're trying to make love. These trucks are making too much noise, and they're just polluting too much gas, and they're just making it difficult for my wife and, you know, her boyfriend Donterius to really enjoy themselves.
Thank you, time.
Yep, but everybody else got to speak past the time limit, so I just have a couple more minutes. So what I'm saying is, in this city, we have serious issues, and my songs aren't gonna solve it. And we have Eric Adams in the nightclub, you know, doing god knows what.
Sir, if you're not gonna stay on topic, your time is finished.
I can't talk about Eric Adams? Is he not on topic?
We're talking about truck routes.
That's what I'm saying. So is Eric Adams not in charge of the city? Is he not in charge of the truck routes?
Are you finished with your remarks on trucking?
No, I'm not finished. I'm not finished. I just don't understand why everybody else gets to come here and pontificate for five, 10 minutes, and I try to talk about something and you try to shut me down. Why is it? Is it because I'm a homosexual? Is it because I'm bisexual?
Thank you, sir.
Is that why? I think they don't like that I'm bisexual. All right.
Anyway, guys, thank you so much. I'm IG Bump, please help the homeless. It's a serious situation out there. I have to deal with the, you know, the trucks and all that as I'm trying to sleep on a box on 42nd, and I think it should be addressed. Homeless people are people too, and I'm a veteran of this country, titties and all.
Those are veteran titties. All right, guys, and if you guys can give the death penalty to Donald Trump, that would be great too, because we know Alvin Bragg is a really great guy. But listen, it's not about Alvin Bragg. It's not about this city that's crumbling. It's not about the fact that people are overdosing on fentanyl constantly. You guys want this city to fail, but I don't, because I love this city. Like Frank Sinatra said, "If you can make it here, you can make it anywhere." And I'm Primetime99, Alex Stein,
Thank you, sir. That's all.
And make sure to go follow me. Thank you, guys. I'm a pimp on a blimp. God bless. Look, security's coming, security's coming.
If we have inadvertently missed anyone that is registered to testify today and has yet to have been called, please use the Zoom hand function if you're testifying remotely, and you will be called in the order that your hand has been raised. If you're testifying in person, please come to the dais. Seeing no one, we will move to closing remarks from Chair Brooks Powers.
Thank you, Sam, and thank you to all that came out today to testify. We thank the administration for coming and answering all the questions and look forward to the follow-up. And with that, we conclude this hearing.